Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, we are ready to begin this afternoon's board meeting. I was going to introduce Ms. Morgan who is here telephonically, but I think we just lost her, but she may come in and out. When she comes back in, hopefully we'll hear the note that she has joined us. The school board meeting is September 22nd, 2015, is now called order. The time is 2:05. At this time, we request all electronic devices be turned off or put into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except that for special presentations portions of the meeting. We will take this opportunity to remind the members of the public in the district, our mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This afternoon's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one special presentation to the board, public comment, consent actions, which include one item under resolutions, three under executive services, one item under business and finance, twelve under operations, six under teaching and learning, three superintendent recommendations, and one attorney's recommendation, which is good cause. Mr. Martin, would you please give us the explanation for your good cause?
One item is approval of the employment contract for Superintendent Dr. Atkins, who was just appointed a week ago, so that action needs to be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. As a presiding officer, I find there is reason for good cause and to add this to the agenda. There is nine items for public hearing, and there's four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to approve? The agenda is read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. LaRiviera, second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Ms. Dozier will now deliver the invocation, after which Ms. La-
I'm on.
Ms. Morgan?
I'm on.
Good afternoon, Ms. Morgan. We are now ready for the invocation, and then Ms. LaRiviera will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
Please bow your heads. Dear God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us all. Thank you for all of the families that are represented here this afternoon. We appreciate the opportunity that you give us to be able to gather this afternoon for this free and public school board meeting. Please guide each of us, parents, students, members of the public, board members, and the superintendent as we speak this evening. Please let each of our presentations and all of our comments be respectful to others, and ensure that our suggestions will benefit our students and our community. We ask that you guide the superintendent as he brings forth his recommendations. Please guide us as a board and give us the wisdom to make the right decisions concerning each of the recommendations that are brought to the table this afternoon. We pray that this meeting will be successful, productive, and blessed. For this, we give you the glory for all that we accomplished during this meeting. Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on its shoulders, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this point, it is public comment, and we also have a special presentation to the board for public comment. However, board, at this time, I have a motion to make for this board for an exception. The presentation today is from the redistricting process presentation by the NAACP, and unfortunately, permission was given to them for them to allow to use a presentation, bullet point, you know, PowerPoint presentation, which is not the problem, but also they have a placard that actually shows the depiction of the districts that they want to use. Public policy prohibits using placards during public presentation purposes. However, to their defense, they didn't find out about that until a half hour before the meeting, so they couldn't really make any changes. So at this time, I'm going to make a special motion that we allow, that we suspend our public policy to allow them to use a placard for this particular instance, for this special presentation. I made a motion.
Second, sir.
Second by Liz Riviera. Any comments? No comments. Ms. Morgan, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay. So there's five of us. It now takes a super majority. I'll now take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There's been, it's unanimous consent. We'll allow the placards. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Martin to give our disclaimer and then begin with our presentations.
Mr. Toiber, our process is a little bit different today. Of course, you have the special presentation here first, and then public comment will be after that, so I think the general advice that I provide would need to come before the public comment, period.
Okay. At this time, would you like to begin?
Good afternoon. My name is George Epsteininer, and I'm a staff attorney for the Southern Coalition for Social Justice, and on behalf of the Lee County branch of the NAACP, I first wanted to thank Dr. Atkins and the school board members for allowing the special presentation today and the accommodation of what's behind you today as well, so first thank you. My organization, the Southern Coalition for Social Justice, is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization located in Durham, North Carolina. We help to empower disadvantaged communities to exercise their voting rights, particularly in the South. And to begin the presentation today, I first wanted to talk about why we're here now in September of 2015. Under Florida statute, redistricting boundaries for a school board must be drawn in odd number years. Therefore, this board must adopt a redistricting plan pursuant to a referendum that was passed by Lee County voters in November 2014 by the end of this calendar year, so by the end of December 2015, and that's pursuant to statute. And ultimately, a redistricting plan is adopted by school board resolution. To provide some, a little bit of the timeline here today, in June 2014, this school board passed a resolution to allow the voters of Lee County to determine how they wanted the school board to be governed in terms of, under the former plan, which this school board has been elected to, there are five members that are elected in a specific area of Lee County, but voted countywide. Under the plan that was approved by 55 percent of the Lee County voters in November 2014, there are now five single-member districts. What a single-member district is, it means that, similar to the current plan, where a school board member must be located in a specific part of the county, but then the voters only in a specific part of the county can vote for that particular school board member. So you now have five single-member districts, and that was passed by the voters in November of 2014. And so therefore, we have a deadline of December to draw the maps, because in November of 2016, two school board seats are up for election, Districts Two and Three. And therefore, because you have to draw your redistricting boundaries in odd number years, for those districts to be created before the election in 2016, this board must adopt a redistricting plan by the end of the calendar year. And above, you can see the referendum that was passed by the Lee County voters that specifically said that Lee County voters were voting on a single-member district system, but there is no explanation of what those particular boundaries of those single-member districts are, and that's why we're here today presenting the school board with a proposed plan developed by the NAACP. And in adopting the plan, the chairwoman of the school board said that the purpose of what the voters did in November 2014 was to provide broader representation to the school board. And the reason for that is the Lee County student population is more than 55 percent minority, and because the school board has never had a minority school board candidate, so her comments make sense about the school board being reflective of the diverse student population that we have in Lee County. And so I wanted to give the school board an explanation of some traditional redistricting principles, because as an attorney who specializes in these kind of voting matters, when you draw a map, you have to do them pursuant to constitutional principles, and I want to talk about those very briefly. And the NAACP has provided these maps to the school board, in addition to this PowerPoint, so I urge the school board to also look at this at their leisure. And in addition, because we are short on time today, because we're limited to 15 minutes, the NAACP pursuant to its original written request would request an additional presentation either during a workshop, briefing meeting, whatever we can do so that we have more time to give the school board all of the information it needs before it must pass a redistricting plan by the end of the year. So again, we renew our request here today to make that more in-depth presentation, because we're so limited on time. So pursuant to the United States Constitution, when you're drawing particular districts, one district cannot be much more populated than an other, and the reason for this is you don't want one person's vote weighted substantially more than an other. You want everyone's vote to be substantially equal, so that they have their say in who they elect. And so there's a constitutional principle that says if you deviate more than 10 percent from the negative deviation or the maximum deviation of the plan, it's presumptively unconstitutional. As you can see on the board, the NAACP's plan is much lower than that. It's a total deviation of 4.4 percent, so well below that 10 percent threshold. In addition, there's something called contiguity and compactness that's using natural shaping, only separating districts by natural boundaries, you know, such as water or something like that. This is an example of a district that was drawn improperly. It's all over the place. There's barely a straight line there, and so that's an example of what you don't want to do. Another principle is respecting incumbents, meaning you don't want to create a plan that causes members of the school board to have to run against each other. And the NAACP's proposed plan that we urge the school board to adopt doesn't have any incumbents on the school board run against each other. And finally, keeping communities of interest intact. It's very important for districts to have communities with common interests, because again, who you're voting for for school board, it should be reflective of those particular students that live there. And so that's why the NAACP was particularly concerned about communities of interest here. And that's again, as I mentioned previously, the student population of Lee County not only is growing, but the minority population is growing. So now more than 55 percent of the students in Lee County are minorities, and you can see it's increasing over time. So I want to show the school board what the former plan is. And the former plan, what it was, was five particular districts, as we talked about, not single-member districts. But if you look at the top right, the top left district, which was District One, and then the district in white, and then the district below that in yellow, that's Districts One, Two, and Three. Under those former systems, those districts, as you can see, go more east to west, while Districts Four and Five, that are the ones on top, are more north to south in their structure. And you can see that, because in District Four, that's highlighted in blue, you have Greater Fort Myers that is part of that particular community, even though you have water separating it. And you have a vast area of Northern Lee County that's in District Five. And so what the NAACP's proposed district plans do, and you can see they're labeled one through five, they show towns and cities within Lee County. The stars next to the name is the address of the particular incumbent, so you know that it's staying your district. But what the central changes to the NAACP's proposed map are, as you can see, or as the public can see here, Districts One, Two, and Three, essentially because they're that east to west shape, they stay essentially intact. There are some slight boundary changes, but overall, the structure and the shaping of Districts One through Three is pretty consistent. But if you look at Districts Four and Five, Four, for example, for the first time, has this east to west shape that's consistent with all of the other districts. And it keeps those communities of interest in the Northern Lee County and Northern Fort Myers area intact. So all of those individual members in that Northern Lee County area could vote for their particular representative in District Four, which makes sense. And then finally, in District Five, you can see that it contains, formerly it was that vast area north to south. Now it contains parts of Greater Fort Myers that's not separated by water. It contains parts of Greater Fort Myers and Lehigh Acres to combine communities of interest in that district, and again, having that east to west shape. And now, Mr. Morgan, on behalf of the NAACP is also going to speak, but again, I wanted to thank the school board for their time today, urge the school board to adopt the proposed plan by the NAACP, and adopt a plan before the end of the calendar year, and give us additional time to give the board whatever it needs in a workshop or other briefing opportunity so that we can give you all the information as possible. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, school board members. Dr. Gregory Atkins, interim superintendent, community members, school personnel, members and friends. Allow me to introduce myself. I'm Frederick Dunbar Morgan II, a retired educator working at Edison State College more than 29 and a half years, helping young students who are at risk get into school, stay in school, and graduate and go on to do great things with their lives. That program called the Project Hope Help One Person Excel helped thousands of the students that we graduated here in the Lee County School District go on to do great things with their lives, and I'm so proud of that program. I serve on the education committee with the NAACP, as well as I'm the advisor to the youth council, so thank you for having me to be a speaker here this morning, or this afternoon. The Lee County branch of the NAACP's redistricting plan is an opportunity for improving representation of students and parents on the expanded Lee County School District school board. December 2015 is the deadline to draw new district maps in time for the 2016 elections. Please keep in mind that Districts Two and Three are up for election in 2016. The goal for the NAACP is to allow citizens of our communities to elect representatives of choice to serve on our school board and respond to their needs, ensuring equal educational opportunities for everyone. Fifty-five percent of the students of Lee County voters said yes to single-member districts on November 4th, 2014, in the general election. Chairwoman Kathleen Morgan was quoted by the news press saying, "I hope it means a better candidate pool and brings broader representation to the board." We, the NAACP, agree that we hope it will bring a better candidate pool. Of the 67 counties in the state of Florida, 20 have Lee County charters as the form of government, and Lee County is one of those 20. About 80 percent of Florida's residents live in a charter county. A charter is a document that spells out the powers, duties, and structures of government, and the rights of citizens, the way public officials are elected, the form of government, and the role citizens play in local government. Our county, Lee County, is growing at a tremendous rate. We must be proactive in planning now how we will meet their needs, including providing educational opportunities. At this time, in our county's history, we felt that it was very important that the school district chose to adopt single-member district structure for electing the members of the school board. Lee County is the largest county in the state of Florida with at-large elections. I also would like to point out that all counties as large as, or larger than Lee County, have single-member district form of voting or a hybrid form. We're hopeful that the county affords citizens the opportunity to vote on its form of elections as well. Candidates can be better held accountable for representing their district and meeting the needs of the students and parents within that district. It will also allow school board members a chance to get to know school personnel, parents, and students within their districts. In drawing the maps in which the NAACP is presenting for your perusal, the NAACP's plan connects all districts with the exception of water areas, and is drawn with natural shaping. District Five connects communities of interest, which includes specific areas of Fort Myers and Lehigh Acres, and District Four connects all of North Fort Myers, Olga, Buckingham, and Alva. A community of interest can be defined in various ways. It can be a neighborhood or a community that would benefit from being maintained in a single district because of shared interests, views, or characteristics. Some areas of shared community interest for Districts Four and Five include income levels, educational backgrounds, housing, cultural, language characteristics, employment, economic patterns, health, family size, multi-generational households, and median-income households. When new district lines are drawn, care should be taken to keep duly-elected representatives in separate districts rather than forcing them to run against one another. In the NAACP's plan, no incumbent would run against another in the proposed districts. Let me repeat that. In the NAACP's plan, no incumbent would run against another in the proposed districts. We feel that to maximize their voting strength and protect their ability to have their votes heard, communities with common interests should be kept intact and together. Diversity on the school board, we feel, would improve the representation of students. The Lee County School District's minority population continues to increase and is more than 55 percent of the students being black, Asian, Hispanic, or Native American.
Your time is up, Mr. Morgan. Thank you.
We feel our school board should be reflective of the student population which it serves. We, the Lee County NAACP branch-
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for this opportunity, and we thank you for serving our community.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on now to public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please make our disclaimer for a public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity, at this point in the meeting, to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this afternoon, the school board vice chair, Mr. Toiber, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers, or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Speakers are expected to act in as respectful manners. Those who fail to do so after receiving a warning from the chair may be required to leave the meeting. Disrupted personal attacks on individuals are prohibited. Mr. Toiber, I have nine cards this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anybody in our meeting area that did not fill out a card but would like to address the board? Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Okay, we have eleven.
Eleven to nine.
I'm sorry? Can I have, can we start with the names? Can you raise your hands, and we'll start with? Yeah. Anybody else in this side? Mr. Fox? Ms. Feighy? Anybody else on this side? On this side? In the back, Jamie? Anybody else? Okay, we'll begin, Ms. Quackenbush.
Oh, I need to go to the cards first, sir.
Oh, are the numbers first?
Yes.
Okay, your first card.
Our first speaker is Ms. Clara Alave.
Very much, good afternoon, board. Dr. Atkins, I'm here as one of the co-founders of a local organization called Showing Up for Racial Justice, Southwest Florida. We're a national network of groups and individuals organizing white people for racial justice, and we're doing this through community organizing and education, moving white people to act as a part of a multiracial majority for justice. Today, we are here encouraged by the voters' wisdom in November that mandated single-member district representation. We've heard the proposed plan by the Lee County NAACP and feel it has appropriately aggregated communities with similar interests. We strongly urge the Lee County School Board to consider these communities of interest that have gone without representation for too long. The school board has the opportunity at this time to take bold steps to remedy any institutionalized inequality by fairly redistricting in the manner that the NAACP has suggested and presented. When we speak of institutionalized or structural inequality, we mean policies and practices within institutions that intentionally or unintentionally create outcomes that chronically favor or put a certain group of people at a disadvantage in the community. Equity holds us to a higher standard. It demands that we pay attention not just to individual-level discrimination, but to overall social outcomes. Therefore, this redistricting proposal provides an opportunity for Lee County schools to take a role in the dismantling of any possible injustice, and the proactive reinforcement of policies, practices, and actions that produce equitable power, access, opportunities, and outcomes for all. I have no doubt, as both a parent of a child in Lee County schools, and the lead organizer of Showing Up for Racial Justice, Southwest Florida, that this board will make efforts to promote diversity, equality, justice, and fairness. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I've known most of you for quite a long time, but for those of you that don't know me, my name is Steve Solak. I taught in Lee County school system for thirty years, recently retired, predominantly to help my wife, who's had some medical conditions. I've recently become aware of a man who's been coming to the school board meetings and telling slanderless lies and accusations about my family and friends. It would be pointless for me to address those. It simply is not sane for a person to devote large amounts of energy and resources for the sole purpose of trying to hurt total strangers. I feel that he is unbalanced and irrational. I would ask that the school board provide a safe environment for its employees, and not give this man a forum. I'd ask you to help your employees, not just myself, and I'm now currently a substitute teacher, but also my son, his principal, Dr. Atkins. It seems that anyone who ever disagrees with this man becomes part of the giant conspiracy. I don't know where this is going, but it's obviously escalating. I would ask for your attention to this matter. Thank you.
Betsy Vaughn, good afternoon. I applaud the board for last week appointing Dr. Greg Atkins as acting superintendent. Dr. Atkins is uniquely qualified for a smooth transition to his new role. He stepped in, in the past, for Nancy Graham several times when she was out of her office. In his twenty-eight years with the district, he has had the perspective of a teacher, a school administrator, a district administrator, as well as as a parent. He has the respect of teachers and staff across the district. So, board, I'm here to ask you today to retain Dr. Atkins at the helm as an interim superintendent until you hire a permanent superintendent. I believe that he will prove to have a steady hand to guide the district forward in undeniably rough waters. This action, to keep a steady course, is in the best interest of our school community. With a multitude of pressing financial and other issues in the school district, in addition now to this search for a new district leader, we certainly cannot afford the likely skirmishes over interim choices to escalate the already choppy waters into a tsunami of personal interests. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Anthony Thomas.
Evening, members of the school board. I guess the campaign begins for the superintendent thing. You know, I talked to many of you, and I told you before, I thought you shouldn't put anybody in as the interim superintendent that worked for the district. And the reason why you shouldn't put anybody in for the interim position for superintendent is because they would have an unfair advantage. So you guys are going to now go and do a national search. You're going to have the teachers' union and the general employees' union weighing in on Dr. Atkins' behalf. You're going to have superintendents who are qualified and capable with years and decades of experience all over the country looking at this school district, it's very big and a great school district, and they're going to say, "Well, do I really want to put myself to apply for a superintendent job when the guy who's in the seat now is going to apply for the permanent position?" You're going to scare off all of the real competition. But you put yourself in this mess, and I think you'll have to deal with it, but I thought that was very unwise of the school board to do that. I've shared that with you all before. Let me talk about something that's important to me, and that's the Dunbar Community testing scandal. This is a big deal. We've had certain board members, I know Pam wrote an article saying that this was just something that was a disagreement between people inside the Dunbar community. I heard other people say this was a personal vendetta of Steve and Jeanne. I asked those people who made these scarily s accusations, they have no proof, but the proof is in the pudding, as Willie Green would say, "The superintendent is now gone." Fox Wink News is reporting last week that the superintendent has hired a lawyer. I don't think you just go hire a lawyer just for the hell of it. You hired a lawyer because you feel you did something wrong. So I think today, and as we move forward in the future, the best thing we can do as a school district, and the best thing this board can do to restore credibility and confidence, is to ask for a criminal investigation, someone from law enforcement to come in here. Right now, you have a situation, if you continue, I know I talked to some of you, so you're going to bring back Gonzalez to come and do an investigation. Well, the thing is, if you bring back this lawyer to do an investigation, he has no subpoena power. You have Nancy Graham, Charles Daly, and David Anderson, all of them no longer working for the school district. Why would they talk to your attorney? They're not going to talk to your attorney. So it makes no sense to continue to waste taxpayer money on having some lawyer come down here and do an investigation. What you need to do is get organizations such as Florida Department of Law Enforcement or the FBI to come in. I think when you have people under oath, when you have a criminal investigation, your attorney has told you that there's some elements of some illegal activity that have taken place. Well, he's not a law enforcement person, so you need to have a criminal investigation. We need to get to the bottom of what has happened here. We've got to clean house and restore public confidence in our school district, because if this continues to go forward, and you don't have confidence, and you have a situation where the testing and property...
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, your time is up, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Robert Schaefer.
Thank you. In response to repeated input from parents, educators, community leaders, and other stakeholders, Lee County schools have begun moving away from testing misuse and overuse. We need to do much more, starting tonight. The latest revision of the Lee District's state assessment and district progress monitoring schedule does reduce standardized testing from its original overkill proposal. Yet middle-school students, under the current plan, will still spend two to three entire days of the school year being tested. This is still excessive. The law school admissions test that several of you have taken took just over four hours. The test that is needed to get into graduate schools of education takes less than four. Why do sixth, seventh, and eighth graders need four to five times as much testing every year as we need to determine who can get into law school or education schools? Why is a district still pushing for progress monitoring external exams when our teachers already assess all the time? Weekly spelling tests, chapter exams, book reports, science presentations, et cetera, those are all the ongoing assessments that our students, their parents, and taxpayers need. Unfortunately, in Tallahassee, the test-and-punish ideologues, whose policies have warped public education in this state for a decade, are at it again. Now they're pushing for raising the bar on the Florida-to-Florida standards assessment so that more students, teachers, and schools are branded failures. There's no justification for this scheme, so they resort to fabrications, and we need to push back. First, the commissioner of education falsely declared that the independent study found the test valid. That is not true. The consultants even said they did not find the test valid. They called them suspect. Now, the advocates on the state board of education want to raise the bar, asserting that somehow having tougher tests and more tests and more standards will magically increase wages and employment. Hello? Did they look at what happened during the Great Recession when Florida scores went up and jobs and earnings went down? Test scores don't create jobs, let alone good jobs. So it's time for the Lee School Board to ratchet up the pressure, so they get the message, both our staff and folks in Tallahassee. First, don't approve the proposed district progress and monitoring plan, still too much testing. Second, adopt a resolution rejecting the results of the FSA for grading schools or teachers. They are not valid tools. Other districts have done so.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, your time is up, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Alexandra Galante.
Hi. My name's Alexandra Galante, proud parent of a kindergarten student. I've come here today to address fitness in the Lee County school system. According to health.gov, dietary intake and physical activity is an important part in maintaining good health. Plato once said, "In order for man to succeed in life, God provided him with two means, education and physical activity, not separately, one for soul and other for body, but for the two together. With these means, man can attain perfection." It is my child's first year in the Lee County school system. I have played a role as her basketball and soccer coach, a nutritional enthusiast, and I am an aspiring fitness trainer. Despite all of this dedication, like most parents, I struggle keeping up with a healthful lifestyle. It is not easy, nevertheless, we are a team. Growing up, lunch and recess were my favorite things about school. Kids worked harder and behaved more just to get that. Now, when I get off work at 5:30 to pick my child up from aftercare, I ask her how her day was. "Did you play outside? Did you finish your lunch?" Almost every day, she says, her class didn't have enough time to play outside because they took too much time to eat lunch. Other days, I ask her why she barely ate lunch. She tells me that it's because they didn't have enough time. Even in private school last year, her VPK teacher warned us to learn how to eat quickly because public schools are notorious for rushed lunches. I find this issue very unsound and unconducive toward the mission of the Food and Nutrition Services, which states to provide nutritious meals that nourish children, enhancing the readiness to learn. Is this working? With proper fitness, how do we, without proper fitness, how do we expect our child to learn to their full ability? I am friends with gym teachers and trainers who go into the Lee County school system to coach our children, but for our children, one gym class per ten-day cycle is not enough. I think a fit mentality should be adopted by the school system in entirety, teachers, parents, school board, and most importantly, children. Especially in the sunshine state, we want our children to be active throughout the day in preparation for an active future. We do not want our children to adapt to sitting and being lazy and developing poor habits. I understand that most of this is up to the parents, meaning reading, exercise, emotional support given to my child, so I'm not pointing any fingers. However, when my child is in school while I'm at work, I expect her to be given the opportunity to grow healthily while I work. I urge the school system and parents to become more aware and passionate about our children's fitness, inside and outside of school.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Sierra Suska.
Hi, I'm Sierra Suska, and if you know me, I come to these meetings regularly, but I recently started dual enrollment at FSW in the evening, so I can't make it to these. But I can come now, because it's two o'clock. At the last meeting, I was actually in my Spanish I class, because I take those, and I can't really attend these. But if I had been informed earlier of Nancy Graham's resignation, I could have made plans to be absent from my class, because my Spanish teacher is cool with us missing a few classes, because this is important. Today's meeting I can attend, but many others, such as teachers, can't. I can more easily rearrange my schedule, as I'm a student, but employees can't just up and leave work, because it's just not appropriate just to say, "Hey, I'm going to go out for a few minutes, bye." I'm going to be honest here, you need to be sensitive of that, because you serve our county, and just rearranging the schedule to some time when less people can make it makes it more difficult. My family got Chinese food a few days ago, and we love fortune cookies. We like reading the nonsense in them, and we actually got one with some rather fine logic. So, ideas not coupled with action never become bigger than the brain cells they occupied. I figured you might enjoy that, and you might be able to take something away from that. Have a good day.
Next speaker is Ms. Tara Jenner. Tara Jenner, excuse me.
Tara Jenner, and I'd like to say that my interactions with Mr. Martin, he seems to be an extremely pleasant, kind gentleman. However, as you know, I have mentioned on several occasions that I am a little concerned about what I consider to be the level of his legal acumen, and so I'm mentioning that again today. In light of his own statements themselves during the emergency hearing and during the workshop last Wednesday, I would have to say that sometimes his legal advice is too little, too late, incomplete, inadequate, and oftentimes inaccurate. Point in fact here, the recommendation that was offered at the last regular school board meeting to accept Nancy Graham's resignation was given without... meeting to accept Nancy Graham's resignation was given without clear legal guidelines and advice from him as to the possible timing of her departure. Had that information been given with the pros and cons of whether or not she should leave immediately or be authorized the opportunity to stay until her designated retirement date, I think we could have saved ourselves an emergency hearing last week. And so again, I think that that information was inadequate and not adequately given. Additionally, he offered a recommendation to suspend the investigation dealing with the Dunbar High situation. I think that that was unnecessary to be coupled with the recommendation to accept Nancy Graham's resignation. There was no time crunch in doing that, and it should have been delayed, especially in light of the fact that he made himself some comments that he did not have all the information that was available up to that point in time by the investigator. So he's giving legal advice to you without all the facts, and that always results in bad legal advice. Let's look at a couple of other things. He also made the recommendation regarding that discontinuation of the investigation based on staffing issues. There was no mention whatsoever, either in his comments or in the actual recommendation itself for good cause, addressing the issue of criminality or civil violations. And in light of what recently has been going down in Georgia, dealing with their testing issues and the criminal actions that come involved with that, I think that this was extremely inappropriate legal advice on him. And as such, I'm recommending that the board review and consider the continued employment of Mr. Martin as the board's attorney in light of his legal advice coming short, in my estimation. I'd also like to address the fact that the agenda modifications last week, they did not state a time or a date in which those changes were made, and we're dealing with a half a million dollar difference in what was recommended as far as the budget dealing with the testing. That's huge. I didn't know whether I had the most current information or not, and we got the information on the board recommendations by Mr. Martin 10 minutes after the meeting started. So I really think that the agenda, excuse me, the minutes for last regular school board needs to reflect that the population did not get that information until 10 minutes after the school board. But having said that, we had a handful of individuals that came and spoke and gave well wishes to Nancy Graham for her birthday. I was under the impression that public comment was either supposed to be an agenda item or relevant to the operation of the school district, and I'm not sure where well wishes for happy birthday greetings to Nancy Graham falls in that category. And what happened was, we ended up decreasing-
Thank you, Ms. Jenner. Your time's up, ma'am. Next speaker is Reverend Allison Farnham.
Good afternoon, interim superintendent and school board. What a wonderful opportunity it is to address something special. You have been presented with an opportunity today from the Lee County NAACP, and I hope it's an opportunity that you will embrace. It sounds like you have a lot of work ahead of you, as always, as a school board, and here, presented to you, is work and solutions already ready for you to accept. In my line of work, I am the Minister of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Fort Myers, and what we do is, we're less concerned about getting people into heaven and more concerned with getting heaven into people. And one of those ways is through learning and education. And I know that your mission is to maximize the learning potential of every child, and I believe that that is something you can do by accepting the proposal that's been made to you today. It's a wonderful way to embrace a way forward for Lee County. Think of how you will be lauded as leaders in our community by embracing this new proposal with open arms. I look forward to that time, and I look forward to you voting yes on this proposal. Many blessings to you.
Those are all the cars, Mr. Tobler.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin. We'll start with, now with Ms. Quackenbush.
Hello, Board. I'm Chris Quackenbush. My vision and expectation of the Lee County School District would be a place where eager children would absorb a solid foundation of vital knowledge to unleash their God-given potential in an atmosphere of honesty and justice where they can trust their teachers and administrators. There seems to be a troubling pattern in our school district and many others for decades. Teachers and administrators who violate laws and sometimes even basic moral standards have been repackaged and reassigned rather than holding them accountable. Evidence has been swept under the rug to avoid embarrassment to the district and to those individuals without regard to the victims. We must be clear and set high standards. We must weed the garden or the flowers won't grow. We should object to turning our schools into recycling centers for misfits. The weeds have choked the great teachers who are leaving our schools by the droves. We should not tolerate retaliation against good parents, teachers, and administrators who've been calling attention to illegal, immoral, or unsafe acts. We must clean house and put all those responsible into the green can, not the blue one, and fire them for cause and make sure that records follow them so they don't appear elsewhere. We need to prosecute them if they violated the law. It's not up to you to be gracious and magnanimous and grant them forgiveness of any kind. It's not kind to foster a belief that their behavior is acceptable to the victims where there's no closure on the violations. Please take the difficult responsibility to set the tone and demand a full and complete external investigation by law enforcement of the cheating scandal and other violations and use the same zero tolerance that you impose on our students. Issue number two, the testing calendar, really important. Bob Schaefer's statement was correct, and I echo all of his sentiments. Last Friday, I visited an excellent school in Naples, Mason Classical Academy. I asked them how they achieved high goals with a shoestring budget and in their first year. She said, "It's simple. We just didn't do any testing, except what was absolutely mandated by the state. We had more time to learn." That's the point. We are robbing the children of their love of learning and the time to learn. So we need to cut that calendar, and if I was you, I would submit the zero calendar that you did last year and fill it in later if need be with the FSAs as they're required, which are invalidated and certainly not worthy. They're not- the test scores aren't even back yet. Third thing is, my main concern is what are our children learning?
Thank you, Ms. Quackenbush. Your time's up, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Perez.
Good afternoon. It'll be almost two years since my child first complained about the physical attacks she endured in 11/22/2013 to Principal Capriota. As I am sure everyone is now up to speed from my emails detailing certain events, as of yet, I have not seen any action taken to make the individuals responsible that harass falsified statements about my child and behave in a retaliatory manner to her complaint. I find it very hard to accept the board has not moved to insist the dismissal of Principal Capriota and all individuals involved. I have a copy of her statement that Doted sent me, and it's filled with false statements along with her tactics of coercion and intimidation, which I experienced firsthand. All this concerns me, that this is an unacceptable behavior, and it's a typical occurrence and tactic that is encouraged throughout the Lee County District Schools. I'm having a hard time accepting that this district has created a culture of fear, intimidation, and retaliation for anyone who tries to report or file a grievance against certain individuals. I will not stop until everyone who played a part in trying to destroy my child, who suffers from a disability and was the victim of not one crime but several, are held responsible for their actions. I have seen the agenda for the superintendent's recommendations of the resolution proclaiming October 1st through the 15th as Disability History and Awareness Weeks. I'm pleased to see this action taken, but it does not give any closure nor does it bring justice for my child of the acts inflicted upon her by your staff that are still gainfully employed and have not been held accountable for their actions. I have a copy of a statement from a child's mother that states what Principal Capriota was doing by confusing my daughter's peers, filling them with lies about my child. This is called tampering and obstruction. I have also been informed of the retirement or resignation of Jeanne Folares that participated in the destruction of my child's files, as she openly admits this in emails, where she conspired with a lobbyist to prevent my child from having anyone assist her. If you allow her to resign without investigating and holding her accountable, along with Bob Saris, you are then complicit to the crime, and one may interpret that as a violation of racketeering influenced and corrupt organizations. This same behavior I could see was the same method of operation with the Dunbar cheating scandal. I am formally making a request here, which I've given to Susan, for Julia Andrelon's grievance against the LE, several months before the cheating was discovered. I'm also requesting the investigation be completed and for the district to request an external law enforcement division to come in, investigate, and ensure us this is not Fulton County, Georgia, all over again, where the superintendent and key staff administrators were found guilty of racketeering, false statements, writings, influencing witnesses, and theft by taking. This type of conduct from the district and administrators is why Mr. Kevin Regal has not been able to move on. When he left his district, he obtained employment elsewhere. You had two key employees to reach out to Collier County, where he was offered a position, and verbally consulted with Collier County personnel, and his job offer was rescinded.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Your time is up, ma'am.
Mr. Valenta.
Wow, how do I follow that? I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Atkins in his new role. I hope he does well. We all rely on that. Many times I've talked to this board about Dr. Amy Desmore's purchase orders, requests, recommendations, and I'm gonna do it again because here it is yet again. I'm gonna read this, I'm gonna read her recommendation, and then I'm gonna pause and I'm gonna add how much little bit of wording needed to be added to that for it to be clear. "I recommend board approval of two purchase requisitions in the total amount of $70,000 and authorization for the issuance of two purchase orders as described to U.S. Foods for teacher salad bars and holiday foods." It does not even fill up the space for the remaining line. It wouldn't even add one line. I don't know if that's something that requires board action or if Dr. Atkins can simply give her direction to have a little bit of descriptive in there. That's how little descriptive we're talking about, just so that we know what it is we're looking up. I wanted to talk about the district benchmarks, their tests. Approximately, by my guesstimation, it doubles the amount of tests. In an atmosphere where we all kind of agree there's overtesting, so our decision at the local level is to double our local tests. This makes absolutely no sense to me, and it makes no sense to these people. I encourage you to vote down the recommendation for adopting and sending to Tallahassee that schedule. And I think Bob Schaefer and Chris Quackenbush said it best, so I really can't even add to that, but I endorse everything that they've said. I also endorse what Anthony Thomas said and what Jaclyn Perez said. External investigation, the FDLE is not going to be believable because they work for the governor, as does Pam Stewart. So by many people, they're just not gonna be believable. That's my opinion. I think we need to have the FBI do it. Our taxes already cover the FBI. It would be at no additional cost to the district. We'll talk later. That's all I've got.
Ms. Yovaney.
Giovanelli.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Congratulations, Dr. Atkins, and I would say hello, Board. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Thomas, Ms. Schaefer said. We've got to continue the investigation, ever how the board sees fit, but I kind of have to agree that we probably need an outside investigation at this point, and let's just take care of business and get it done and get it past us because that's how only way we're gonna be able to move on, because if they're not gonna move on, if y'all don't move on. So, let's do it, because we need to shut 'em up. Let's get going. And I just want to say, let's don't vote this calendar. Let's don't vote for this calendar. I know Dr. Atkins can relook at this. He hadn't had a chance in a couple of days to really do this. I think with his expertise, can get it right, get everybody happy, so we can move on. So, let's move on. Have a great week.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Board, and Dr. Atkins, for this opportunity to speak to you today. I'm actually a local pastor, a leader in the community. I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned about our students and our Lee County teachers. I came because I feel that it's my responsibility as a pastor and a member of the community because I see and I hear about our students that are suffering with all of this ridiculous testing that's going on. Testing which, in my understanding, does not benefit our students at all. As a friend to many public school teachers, I'm here to speak up for them because I understand they cannot speak up for themselves. What has been allowed to happen in our district and state is serious, and it's sad. It's sad because those who are affected most cannot speak up about the issues. Also today, I ask the board that you would be bold. I ask that you would be courageous. I ask that you would vote to stop this unnecessary district assessment testing for the sake of our students and our teachers. From my perspective, it seems to me that in an effort to bring unity to the educational process by implementing Common Core and all of this excess testing, we still lack one common thing: common sense. I'm not at all surprised that our young graduates are not willing to go into the teaching profession because of the current situation with this issue. May God give you courage, wisdom, and discernment to vote in the way that's most beneficial for our students in Lee County, because in doing so, you will be doing what's right for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hall.
Welcome, Dr. Atkins. Congratulations on your appointment. I think the year has started off wonderful for my two children. I am the SAC, I'm on the SAC Committee at Cypress Lake Middle School. I am the DAC rep for Edison Park, and as of last week, I am on the Executive DAC Committee. So yay! I think I'll get to see more of you guys this year. Awesome. Last night, I learned that our elementary school students are being tested a lot, and I think that's just really sad. I have a fourth grader, and he has a wonderful teacher. When I sat at curriculum night last night, I just couldn't help but think, man, I wish she would have been my fourth grade teacher. She had so much energy. She talked about math like she was talking about chocolate, and it was awesome. I mean, I just thought, wow, this is great. But then, I saw what she has to do, because she didn't make this testing schedule. I don't really even know who did. But our kids are given these district assessments, progress monitoring, and you know, I think according to this bill that passed that Governor Scott signed, we don't have to require this any longer. So I just am really confused as to why we're doing this in Lee County. I mean, you know, the Google Chromebooks have been fantastic in the middle school. I mean, they've been great for my daughter. I've heard that there's kind of a long-term plan to launch them into high schools, then elementary schools. You know, what if we took this time and we taught our elementary students to type? Can you imagine? That'd be awesome, since everything they do is gonna be on a computer in the next few years. But hey, I'm not an educator. It's just a suggestion. But I can tell you what, these district tests, the hours that they're spending doing this, I think there's got to be a better way. You guys have great teachers. You have great students. Please, 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 do not approve this testing schedule. I think there is a better way. I know somebody suggested it. You turn it in blank, but you know, I have to speak on behalf of some teachers. I don't know that that's fair to the teachers, because if it's blank, I think they are just, what's gonna happen? Are we gonna get assessments thrown on us again? So I don't think that's fair to leave it blank. I think we just leave 'em off. So, thank you, guys, for letting me speak, and please vote no.
Thank you. Ms. Fahy.
Good afternoon, Board. Dr. Atkins, welcome. We have high expectations for you. I know you know that, and we're all hoping that you are able to achieve them. I think one of the ways that our community is going to be able to come together and our district is going to be able to be strengthened is through an investigation on a federal level, and I do hope that we see that happen. level, and I do hope that we see that happen to allow the community to have more trust in what's going on with our district. As far as the testing calendar, what I would like to see is that we could put the brakes on this today and put it on a special meeting for, I know it's due October 1st. It could be for a special meeting, I don't know, Friday, Monday, where you would all have time to actually look at what's in this test. I agree with Mrs. Hall that if we send in a blank calendar, what happened last year is that the superintendent told the teachers to go ahead and give the tests anyway. And that is one of the concerns that I have with the testing calendar now. The new one in the agenda for today actually doesn't even show several of the tests that were already given in August and September, and I think those need to be listed because they were given to the students. On the agenda for today, I also see many, many pages on, okay, that may have been one too many, I don't want to exaggerate, but several pages of ESE teachers out of field. And that's a concern for me with the inclusion. We need to move on and start taking care of some of these issues. Inclusion is not good for any of our students, and parents on both sides of the spectrum will tell you they don't appreciate inclusion. That brings me to policy 4.04.
Ms. Fahy, let me pause your time. You can address the issues in public hearing during that time, at public hearing. Not at this time, ma'am, but there will be an opportunity during the public hearing just before those policies are considered. You have 45 seconds left.
Okay. The last item I have, I think, is very important. It's about the cellular tower that's to be placed on Island Coast High School. We're only getting $2,000 a month. That's not worth putting our children at risk for their health and safety. We do not need a tower there. We don't need the $2,000 a month. Thank you. We made it.
Thank you, Ms. Fahy. Mr. Fox?
Speaking on the finances of the district once again, I'll read you a quote. "A conservative believes that debt creates unhealthy relationships," and you know what? I believe that. "Everyone from the government on down should live within their means and strive for financial independence." Government, school boards, school districts should achieve as much as they can financial independence. Does anybody know who that quote is from? Does anybody on the board recognize that? It's actually from Glenn Beck. He's a conservative. As far as I know, he is. I think he's right. I think he's absolutely right, which brings me back to the subject that I come here every week to discuss, is the overwhelming debt that this district has run up by not living within its beans and by not believing it needs to be financially independent and by spending tons and tons of taxpayer money using cops and bad repayment schedules. Ms. Dozier, Mr. Toyber, we're aware of the mistakes that you guys have made in the past that have cost taxpayers tens of millions of dollars and caused problems in this district today. Mr. Beck is right. Also, another quote. It's from Thomas Jefferson. "It is incumbent on every generation to pay its own debt as it goes, a principle which, if acted on, would save one-half the worst of the world." Once again, one of our founding fathers is pretty smart. He's right. If you pay for it as you build it, then the next generation doesn't have to deal with it. They use that asset instead of being a liability, it's an asset. Now, this district's got big problems with its finances. It's deferring its maintenance in a very serious way, and that's going to threaten the value of everything this district does. Now, the young lady who spoke early about ideas that don't have action as wasted brain cells or whatever her quote was, but she's right. Ms. Dozier, you have publicly said that you want to halve some sales tax. Publicly say it, and you'll say it today. You believe that. So why won't you get behind it and push it? I know it's a fight. There's people out there who won't want to do it, and there are people who will want to do it. I'd say it's about 50/50. It's a matter of work. Really, what the big point is, is what does the board define itself as? Is it just someone sits back and gives opinions, makes a call here and there? Or is it going to work for the betterment of the students of this district? And that means getting out there, rolling up your sleeves, and working. You believe it. You're absolutely right. Go do it. You'll have my support 100%, Mrs. Dozier, 100%. And the public will, when they understand the situation, they will support it.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Your time is up, sir.
Jamie. Mr. Castellano is fine. Jamie actually is the first in the back.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. Today, I'm speaking as an individual and as a union officer about the definition of bully and bullying as defined in several dictionary. As an employee of the school district, I have always been responsible to ensure that students are not bullied. As an officer of the Support Personnel Association of Lee County, I've been responsible to work on situations when adults are bullied by other adults or even by students using the correct processes until resolved. A bully is a quarrelsome, overbearing person who badgers and intimidates. To bully is to force one's way aggressively or by intimidation. To behave like a bully is to make one's way aggressively. To treat in an overbearing, intimidating manner, discourage, frighten with threats or domineering manner, intimidate, persecute, torment, hound, oppress, pick on, victimize, terrorize, push around, ill-treat, ride roughshod over, maltreat, tyrannize, overbearing, force, coerce, railroad, bulldoze, browbeat, domineer. Workplace bullying refers to the repeated and unreasonable actions of individuals or a group directed towards an employee or a group of employees which are intended to intimidate, degrade, humiliate, undermine, or which creates a risk to the health and safety of the employees. The Workplace Bullying Institute's definition of workplace bullying. Workplace bullying is repeated, health-harming mistreatment of one or more person, the targets, by one or more perpetrators. It is abusive conduct that is threatening, humiliating, intimidating. Work interference, sabotage, which prevents work from getting done, or verbal abuse. Each one of us in this room must look at ourselves and others. Has this happened in the past? How do we stop bullying in the future? It must start with this board. It must be dealt with by this board. It must be stopped by this board. There is freedom of speech, and then there is bullying. Was this superintendent bullied out of the district? And I want to thank you for putting Dr. Atkins in place. Thank you.
Mr. Castellano?
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin, and school board. My name is Mark Castellano. I'm president of the Teachers Association of Lee County. I have been a part of this school district for 29 years. A little scary to think about that. In that time, I think I figured out I've had, including interims, 11, possibly 12 superintendents. Each time we've gone through these transitions, there's one thing that is a fact, and that's that the work needs to continue. And it is very difficult when we have transition after transition for us to just be able to continue that work. That work never ends. It's constant, and it's important work that we have to do. The last five years have been, I don't mean to be melodramatic, but slightly traumatic to our district in terms of the turnover. When you made the decision to appoint Greg Atkins as the interim superintendent, we took a deep breath because we knew that one thing for sure was going to be able to happen. We were going to be able to continue the work that must get done. And I encourage you, I encourage you to think through this carefully, and let's not do an interim to the interim and then the search. Let's allow Dr. Atkins the time to calm the waters in this district and let us, I know that we will be able to continue the work that must get done. I appreciate you listening to me today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members, Mr. Martin and Dr. Atkins. I'm Jill Castellano, and I am so proud to be a high school teacher in the East Zone of Lee County, and I have been teaching in the same school for nine years. Over the past five years, I've had the opportunity to work with Dr. Atkins on a number of projects here in the district, from the bargaining team to career ladder. Last week, when he was appointed acting superintendent, like Mark and other fellow teachers, I took a huge, deep breath because I was so excited to know a man that I trust, that I believe in, was now at the helm of our district. When I first started working with Dr. Atkins, I was so impressed not only at his leadership abilities, but at how forward-thinking he is about education. But what has impressed me most in five years is that Dr. Atkins is truly a teacher superintendent. In the 27 years, he has been a loyal district employee, and if Mark's had 12 or 13 superintendents, Dr. Atkins has had the same. And every superintendent that I've been through, I think it's been five in my nine years, Dr. Atkins has always been loyal to this district. He's never spoken against this district or a decision by this board or our superintendent. And I think that that's what's important when people speak about him in the sense that he's someone's puppet or lackey or whatever word you may want to use. No, he's just a loyal district employee. He has been committed as a teacher, a school-based administrator, and a district administrator. But in his heart, Dr. Atkins has never left a classroom and never left a school. I always tell people that he is my educational hero because he's the person I want to be. I want to have his sense. I want to have his innovation, and I want to be as forward-thinking as he is. He inspires me as a teacher to always reflect on my instruction and be the best teacher I can be for the students in my school. But what impressed me most about Dr. Atkins, as I work in the East Zone, I worked at a school that was struggling. We were a D-school, and it got to the point as a teacher, I just thought we were going to be destined to fail, and I felt no one, not our board, not anyone downtown, cared that my school was falling down, until Dr. Atkins became the East Zone Director under Dr. Burke, and he came to our school, and I saw his commitment and his dedication to turning us around. He gave me hope as a teacher. He changed my outlook to say, yes, with the right leadership and with teamwork and with someone who cares at the district office, careful about our school, we could change, and we have. I want to continue to see him as our superintendent, whether it be interim or if I had the choice, he would be permanent because every day, Dr. Atkins gives us correct leadership and correct hope in education. Thank you.
Okay, having no more people for public comment, next on the approval is the action items under consent. Board members, are there any polls this evening? I'll start with you, Ms. Fisher.
I have no polls.
Ms. Dozier?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan, are you still with us?
I am still with you, and I have no polls.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. LaRiviera?
No polls.
And I have no polls. At this point, is there a motion to approve the agenda consent as read?
Salute.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. LaRiviera. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Motion carries 5-0. Now, we have no unfinished business. We now move to the items of, oh, we do have unfinished business. We don't, but I just would like to say included in the approval of the consent agenda is the resolution proclaiming October 1st through the 15th as disability history and awareness weeks. Dr. Atkins, was there any new appointments this term?
Yes, there is. I'd like to introduce Michelle Lindo Rice, who is now the new assistant principal at Lee County Jail, Price Halfway House in Southwest Florida Juvenile Detention, Vence Smith Center, and Dunbar Community School.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. At this point, we will now move to superintendent recommendations. Mr. Atkins, Dr. Atkins?
Okay. Thank you, board members. The first recommendation that I have is to recommend board approval of the proposed 2016 legislative program of the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards.
Board members, you heard the superintendent's recommendation for the 2016 legislative program of the Greater Florida Consortium of School Boards. Is there a motion to approve?
Salute. Second?
By Ms. LaRiviera, seconded by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? Ms. Fisher?
Okay, yes, I just wanted to read a few comments in regard to the Florida Consortium of School Boards legislative priorities. The drafts of the platform and the related issues were created from suggestions from 11 member school boards of the Greater South Florida Consortium. All of the items that we submitted from our local platform were adopted within this platform. That was capital outlay funding, charter school governance issues were top priorities for us in this process. The platform is published and distributed to all legislators. This board can adopt the issues on the platform, or we can remove one or more items while ratifying the rest. We cannot amend any items, nor can we add any items to either of these documents. A reminder that only issues ratified by all 11 school boards will be included in the final platform, and the items developed as the part of the drafting meeting were developed in good faith by all participants, and I hope will give deference to that process to the extent possible. And finally, just a reminder that the consortium has been a very meaningful way for us to advance our local platform positions.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Dozier?
I will be supporting this. For the members of the public that are aware, not aware, the school board is a member of this consortium, and I'm going to give you a little bit of history. It used to be just called the Southwest Consortium or something like that. And as, you know, a lot of organizations go through change and they want to have a greater impact, you know, we said that that name really didn't describe the power that that consortium has. So all of a sudden, a wise old bird said, maybe I shouldn't call that person a bird, a wise individual said, why don't we call it the Greater Florida Consortium? Because we have almost half the students in the state of Florida, we have more representatives than all the other districts put together, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, that man is sitting at this table. It's Mr. Stephen Toyber. In fact, I was the president of the consortium at that time, and you know, it was like, you know, it was just the change of a few words, but once that change was made, it certainly made the legislators sit up and take notice because with that, we also began letting them know how many districts we represent, how many students we actually represent, how many parents we represent. And when they started looking at those numbers, because we have Miami, Palm Beach, we have Miami-Dade, Palm Beach, Broward, there's 11 of us all together.
Collier, Lee, all the coastal counties.
Kind of all around the state. And we always have a legislative meeting, and the boards go to wherever the president is, and we hammer out a lot of information, looking at a lot of ideas to bring to the legislature. And I think that we've got a good platform, and of course, I think all of you can see that part of our emphasis is on testing, that we know that that's something that the legislature has to recognize, that it's just excessive and there's too much of it. So I will be supporting this platform, and I will be working to make sure that maybe some of the, with Mrs. Fisher, and hopefully that the legislators will recognize some of our initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. Ms. Morgan, would you like to make any comments?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Ms. LaRiviera? I would just like to add, one of the things, you know, we are the, most of the donating counties in the state of Florida, so we do carry a lot of clout. One of the things that I appreciate that this delegation has done, we actually, there's only two of those counties that are in our delegation that actually don't have capital millage provisions through a sales tax or referendum or something to allow them for the capital gaps that they have, and we being one of them and the largest one that needs it, and we got that on our platform, which is a huge thing because now we have all of the coastal counties carrying our water for something that... carrying our water for something that really impacts us more than it does them. So it's a great thing that we got that on the platform and it, because it's a huge issue for us and it allows us to lead forward with, with that consortium and not just us speaking in our, in our lonesome. So I'll definitely be supporting this platform. Okay, in that plane, I'll take the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
You oppose, you were in favor, correct?
It's a time delay.
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Mr., Dr. Atkins, your second recommendation?
Okay, next item is approval to extend the review timeline for charter applications. I recommend board approval to extend the review timeline through October 20th, 2015 for pending charter school application from early-career Academy Fort Myers, Inc., Gulf Coast Charter Academy, Inc., Harlem Heights Community Charter, Inc., and ITech Preparatory Academy, Inc., with no additional cost to the district. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute related documents.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Fisher?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. LaRiviera. Any discussion? Having no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Dr. Atkins.
Next item is approval of the State Assessment District Progress Monitoring Schedule, testing schedule for the 2015-16 school year. I recommend board approval of the State Assessment and District Progress Monitoring Schedule for the 2015-2016 school year as submitted at an estimated annual cost of $548,253.48. Approval also authorizes superintendent modify the testing schedule, administration windows as needed, and to make other modifications resulting from revisions made by the Florida Department of Education. And before I move on this recommendation, just have a question of clarification for Mr. Martin. Because of some of the changes that we did this afternoon, the actual cost to the district for testing will be reduced significantly. The actual cost, if we're not supporting the software that does the progress monitoring, would reduce that by a little over $508,000. So the approximate cost would be just to support state-required testing, which would be an approximate cost of about $20,000.
Board members, you heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. Fisher. Discussion, Ms. Dozier.
Yes, first of all, I want to speak to the individuals that, I don't know if y'all have the newest copy of what was presented today. Do you have a copy of that? And I'm going to ask Dr. Atkins to basically talk about what you reduced this with. And I have to tell y'all, you know, sitting up here making decisions, we listen to the public, we listen to, you know, staff, we listen to the superintendent and, you know, we have to be cooperative with one another in, when you move forward and you do something. And I have to tell you that I had my first meeting with Dr. Atkins last Friday and I went over several concerns and of course, this testing instrument, our, our testing assessment that we have to turn into DOE was at the top of my list and he was very receptive. And then I had another conversation with him yesterday and I said, you know, I really don't want to sit here at the table and not, not support, you know, your recommendations as, you know, your first time as the superintendent because what that does out in the public eye, that means that, you know, even though all of you are here and you hear all the discussion, a lot of the people don't hear that, but instead, they look at the actual votes and if there are two votes against Dr. Atkins, then that means that Dr. Atkins doesn't have the support of the board. And I will have to tell you that this is the first time, I think, in probably the last, at least the last four years, that I have asked a superintendent for assistance and it was taken care of almost like that. I have not seen that. In fact, what I have seen is, I have seen things brought to the table and asked if everybody wants it, just like there's another issue that I'm going to talk about, that just adding a couple of words. You know, I asked for that once before. I asked Dr. Atkins about that and I don't know if you noticed that he was shaking his head. That's something that he said, simple fix, I'm going to fix it. That's the type of person we have here. And I am going to support this because he has told me that, I know that he has a daughter that teaches in our system and I may be sharing something that he might rather have had secret, so I apologize ahead of time, I should have thought about that. But he said, you know, I'm hearing it not only from other individuals, you know, parents, but I'm also hearing it from my daughter. You know, my daughter is telling me, because we're telling him that the teachers are just in the weeds and if you, you know, I love that, you know, get rid of the weeds so the flowers can grow. And that's what's happening right now in this district. The weeds are overshadowing the flowers and we've got to get rid of a lot of those weeds. Well, I think that his first step is done with moving, removing a lot of the weeds. And we do have to have something to Tallahassee, but that doesn't mean that we can't make adjustments to it. And he has assured me, and I have every confidence that he will do it, because of his, his rapid assistance with looking into this and changing it immediately, that he will continue to look at this. But he says, I'm going to look at it, I'm going to continue to, we're going to study it and see if we can't make additional, additional changes, deletions to this and we're going to make sure that we're within the letter of the law. So right now, I'm going to support him today and I have every confidence that you're probably going to have this document coming back again and we're going to adjust it. And he even called Tallahassee about getting a, getting an adjustment and he talked to me about that. Not an adjustment, but a, getting a waiver to, to not meet the deadline and I, you know, I said, that would be something that we could do. But he said, you know, I can bring it today and we'll have it in on time and I don't want him to have to have something delayed on his, you know, his first week on his watch. So I'm going to support this the way it is and I know that he has assured me that they're going to continue looking at this. And he said that kind of everybody's on the same page, they realize there's too much testing and that he has, he has made this one of his top priorities and I assure you that he's going to be continuing to work on this. So thank you for your continuing bringing this to the level for us to do something about it. And I thank you, Dr. Atkins, for all, for removing all of that progress monitoring. So can you speak to that for just a second?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Dozier. We did go back and look at the, look at the actual State Assessment District Progress Monitoring Schedule and, and really wanted to look for a way to reduce testing because we've heard from parents, we've heard from teachers even, that, you know, this is just simply too much. You know, we're taking control out of the classroom and, and control's coming from somewhere else. So we, we opened this up and really looked at every single opportunity that we could take something out of this particular schedule. So what that we have in the current schedule today simply recognizes what are the state required assessments. Those are assessments that the state actually requires that we do. In addition to that, in terms of progress monitoring, at the bottom of our State Assessment Schedule, you have the reference to Florida Statute 1008 that specifies that we do, we are required to progress monitor for students that are not meeting standards, in other words, levels one through three. But in order to do that, it specifically states in our plan, principals, teachers will create the plan and the tools to use for progress monitoring at each school. Now, I, I came from a, a site-based decision-making school where the administration and the teachers came together and worked on solutions that were in the best interest of students. You know, it wasn't really a top-down district mandate, it was literally a school-based decision and, and that's how we find most successful decisions in the schoolhouse that are made. It's professionals coming together with the concerns of their students and, and making recommendations. And that's what we're supporting here with this particular schedule. I will have to say that, just to give you some examples of the reductions that have taken place since we started this process and where we are today. If you're looking at testing times, we've had really significant decrease in some of the testing times. Like for example, kindergarten, we started at something like 350 minutes and you have 290 minutes that has been, has been taken off of that. Same with first grade. As you go across the board, you have reductions, like at fourth grade, 480 minutes, and then we get into really four digits up in, at the middle school level. So I think that what this, what this recognizes or what this, what this document represents is actually what we are required to do and turn in at the state level, but then, when it comes to how do we assess and diagnose students locally, that that is a local decision that's made at the school. It is a decision that we feel should involve teachers and of course, the administrators in making the determination in terms of what best meets the needs of, of our students. So that's why, you know, we're making this recommendation because we literally think it is, is down to, you know, the bare minimum. I, I do have to say personally, as Ms. Dozier alluded to, that, that this issue has always been one of particular interest to me. My role with the district hasn't really, I haven't crossed this path as in my other roles, other than working with teachers as a part of working with, with our labor associations. But, you know, as, as a parent and a former teacher and administrator, you know, some of the frustration I've, you know, that dealing with state tests, I've experienced firsthand. So this, this, this issue is near and dear to my heart. So having said that, we will continue to work together and make, make a difference in terms of how we assess students so that we as a community really are very comfortable with how we, how we assess, how we progress monitor and so forth.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Ms. Fisher.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Atkins. First, I want to thank, over the last week, Dr. Atkins and Mrs. Saretta Ralph and the staff for immediate responses to questions about the testing calendar and the testing situation. This morning, I received a few texts from community members and parents and I sent them to Dr. Atkins and within, I, I don't even think it was an hour or maybe an hour and 10 minutes, I had a response and we had a very succinct, brief calendar that said, we'll do what's mandated by state and that teachers and administrators at the schools will make the decisions about how they want to progress monitor. I had an opportunity to be at a school because it was my granddaughter's birthday and I had to bring cupcakes, so I mentioned to the teachers what Dr. Atkins had said to a couple of them. And one of them said, from the kids, thank you, and you have no idea what this will mean in terms of hours for us, that we can do fun things with the kids, that we can spend time instructing and then we can have some educational activities that are not, not detrimental to the kids' well-being, but enjoyable learning experiences. So I'm, I'm grateful for this and looking at this the way it stands now, I will support it.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. LaRiviera?
I'm in support of the current calendar and I thank you that we also included the statute of where we're going and using the statute with guidelines. And some schools may decide to use a research-based assessment, some schools may decide to do the progress monitoring plans and they will decide what's going to meet the best needs for them. And I hope that as they're making those decisions, that they also incorporate not just the teachers, but also incorporate community members and include their SAC with them as well. So yes, I'm in support.
Thank you, Ms. Riviera. Ms. Morgan, do you have any comments?
I do. First of all, you know, I supported it last time and I'll continue to support it. I consider, I continue to be concerned about a couple of things. First of all, we are reacting to, excuse me, a handful of parents and a handful of teachers. We have a parent-community advisory organization, DAC. We have not turned this over to DAC and had the kind of presentation that Saretta Ralph is capable of giving to parents at DAC and getting their input. And I, I think that, that's something we need, we need to address. Secondly, we, we are talking about testing, but there are different issues at different levels requiring different solutions. And the fact of the matter is, the primary problem is at the elementary level and yet we talk about hours per year that we do testing and, and we're not talking about the impact for, on individual levels, elementary, middle, high, or comparing it to where we were five years ago, when we had Florida standards and we made terrific gains in student learning and closing the gap. I'm also concerned that people get up and talk about how many tests, how many hours are testing a year. Let's talk about how many hours are being tested a week. Because I think the number, when you really break it out over 180 days, is just not a significant number. And again, if you look at what we were doing historically, I just, I just think that we're making decisions without, without enough quantitative input. I'm also concerned that in going to local, complete local control of progress monitoring, we have lost the ability as a district to assess how we are doing as a district because we have no ability to compare demographic groups if we're using different, different tools in different schools. And so my question is, at what point does local control interfere with the ability of the superintendent to manage the educational program in the district and to what extent does it interfere with the ability of the board to manage the work as a superintendent? So I think you have to be really careful when you say, everything should be local control and we're going to give everything to the schools because that's not where student achievement comes from, that's not where growth comes from, and that's not how you learn how to best allocate your resources district-wide. So those are my comments. As I said, I will support the, the recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. At this point, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five zero. At this point, that's the end of the superintendent recommendations. We now have a, the board attorney recommendation. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. Toyber, board members, I have one recommendation this afternoon, which is approval of employment contract with Superintendent Dr. Gregory Atkins. At the September 15, 2015 special meeting, the school board appointed Dr. Gregory Atkins to serve as superintendent effective September 16, 2015. A contract of employment is now being presented for approval for this purpose. Dr. Atkins has agreed to maintain his, maintain his salary as an assistant superintendent, his current salary while serving in the office of superintendent. The terms of the contract would allow the school board to terminate without cause upon five days' written notice. Contract also provides that Dr. Atkins would be reappointed to the position of an assistant superintendent upon termination and the recommendation of the successor superintendent. So to today, I recommend board approval of the employment contract for Superintendent Dr. Gregory K. Atkins as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. You have heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. LaRiviera. Any discussion? Ms. Dozier.
Well, I want to repeat again what part of it Mr. Martin read it very quickly and I'm not sure that everybody heard. I don't remember ever having a superintendent come in and not ask for something. I think that speaks volumes for the man that's sitting down from me at the table today. I think the fact that he could have asked for quite a few things, but he asked for nothing except the current salary that he has. You know, I can't tell you what that means and it should mean to everybody in this district because the job that he is doing is absolutely tremendous. And what, from what I've already seen, it's unbelievable, everything, everything that he has accomplished in such a short period of time and how he has, how he has just spent so much time addressing every issue that has come before him. And I want to say that I am going to wholeheartedly support this and I just, I, I never thought I'd say, I wish you would ask for something because I don't feel as though we're going to compensate you for the work that you're going to do because I know that you're going to be dedicated 100% and I just, I just wish that you would ask for a little something. But thank you. Thank you for your consideration and thank you for your commitment to, and dedication to the district and to the children that we serve.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. And, and again, it's an honor to have Dr. Atkins serve with us and I think that the first week, if, if it's, if it's a finger on the pulse of things to come, I think that we will continue to keep doing the work, we will continue to keep a calm, a We will continue to keep calm across the district, and I think we'll get great things accomplished. Some of the smallest things that come up can be taken care of immediately, and to me, that's amazing. So thank you, Dr. Atkins, and I wish you the best.
Ms. LaRiviere?
Well, I too want to thank you, Dr. Atkins. And I think it also, kudos also goes along with district staff that are working alongside him. They, it belongs to everyone. Everyone is working well to make sure that we are not a stagnant district. Some people were concerned that having an interim from within the district, that we would just lay there and nothing would go forward. And we do have a real strong sense, Dr. Atkins, that we are moving forward and things will not be stagnant. And I'm very thankful that we have you in this position. And thank you for your commitment to Lee County Schools. And I don't know, we could always amend his contract and give him something because we want to.
Thank you, Ms. LaRiviere. Ms. Morgan?
I have my comment.
Thank you. Board members, I have a few comments. The approval today is for the position, when we met back several weeks ago, no, last week, time flies when you're having fun. We met last week. It was to put in an interim basis for an emergency purpose, Dr. Atkins. Then we have a plan that in several weeks, we're going to place, put in names to put in an interim superintendent. And that person will carry for the period until we get a search put in place. At that point, then we're going to change to another superintendent. And as we work together, I sent you all a letter yesterday, and I'm just going to reiterate some of the points. But I ask that you all consider that we work together on our district on stable ground and focus on what we need to focus on, which is student education. It appears that right now, we're heading to, and as soon as, at the end of the meeting, I would make provisions as far as what we're going to accomplish on October 16 to get this nationwide search done and appoint an interim. Instead, you know, right now, I believe that we, the Lee County School District, is in a less-than-ideal situation and not held in very high regard by many of our stakeholders. And we have witnessed unparalleled instability, a lack of leadership, and a host of issues that have taken emphasis off of our primary mission, which is to educate children. Given the past three years of this district, I believe the main focus of the board should be to provide leadership, stability, and progress to our community. I believe the best way to accomplish this is through our support of our current superintendent and to assist him get many of the things completed that are lacking, missing, or outstanding. I believe that we can do this while working collaboratively with all the stakeholders to develop a complete and thorough process for a superintendent succession plan so that whenever there is a time to invoke a nationwide search, the process will actually deliver viable candidates from across the nation. And the process is sound, robust, and robust enough to determine the best candidate, and we will be able to offer the proper contract that is fair, equitable, and prudent. I believe that we are in agreement that the Lee County School Board, when it's time for a search, should have a process developed for implementing a nationwide search that can be invoked for a superintendent. The process should include how we select a search firm, candidate criteria, including experience level, expertise, references, et cetera, job expectations and performance metrics, contract parameters, including pay, benefits, termination clauses, travel and bonus, search timeframe, interview schedule and process, community and business input, a turnover procedure, and many other issues in this process. The creation of this entire process should include input from all stakeholders and be done with much community input as possible. Once this procedure is developed, it can be deployed with a certain timetable and a degree of confidence that I don't believe existed in our past nationwide searches. Given our history with our nationwide searches, you can see that we have some room to grow. But as we develop this process, the problem we have is having Dr. Atkins as our choice for interim. There has been discussion that we don't want to have, that's the reason why we want to put in a new interim, because Dr. Atkins has all the requirements and criteria to be the full-time superintendent. So if he's going to apply for the superintendent position, if he's our interim and Mr., who actually said that? I can't remember who it was. Because we had someone in our public comments, I can't remember who it was that made that comment, but made the astute observation that if you have someone as the interim position applies for the full-time position, then it taints the field and a lot of people won't apply. Conversely, so they say, "Well, then we won't put in Dr. Atkins as our interim superintendent. We'll put in some second stringer in the most key, critical seven months that we need in this district when we're facing a capital outlay problem, we're facing our testing issue, we're facing all these current issues. We're going to bring someone in that's not plugged in and ready to do the job." So we're kind of caught in a catch-22. Recognizing that Dr. Atkins wants to apply for the permanent position, it wouldn't be fair to ask him to serve as the interim and then prevent him from applying for the permanent position because we would be punishing him for the sole reason that he is the most capable person to serve our short needs at the time we need him the most, but that the inherent talent may dissuade others. Conversely, it seems more than foolish to put a second-stream interim in place just so as not to taint the candidate pool for the nationwide search. So a solution, since all can agree that it takes time to develop a proper nationwide search process using community input and collaborative processes, I believe that this should not be rushed. I believe that we should establish a longer time window to develop this nationwide search to be conducted. I believe that rushing to perform a nationwide search would lead to poor results since the current climate of Lee County School District will not pull any high-caliber candidates at the current time. Add to this the fact that we are facing an election in the upcoming year. By the time we get in a candidate to actually fill that superintendent position, they would only have two or three months before they would face four new potential board members that would not bode well for the longevity of this new superintendent. So instead of rushing the process and preventing Dr. Atkins from serving us when we need him the most, biasing the nationwide search by allowing him to apply or treating him unfairly and not letting him apply, and omitting the four new board members for participating in this nationwide search process, I propose the following. That today, we hire Dr. Atkins for a time-certain contract of 17 months, where he serves as our interim superintendent until February 1, 2017. During that time, the board works collaboratively with the community to develop a robust nationwide search and will be ready to send the appropriate search firm in February of 2017. Dr. Atkins will have the opportunity to serve as our superintendent for 13 months with a current board and three months with a newly-elected 2016 board, giving ample time for evaluation for compatibility and performance, to have the performance data available. In January of 2017, the then-current school board evaluates whether Dr. Atkins is serving our community the way and to the level desired by the current school board. If Dr. Atkins has met the objectives and the goals established by the Lee County School Board and has directed the district in a manner conducive with the expectations of this community, then we will offer him a contract similar to the parameters that we have established with our nationwide search process, and we move forward with, without having to spend the cost for the nationwide search. If Dr. Atkins has not met the objectives and goals of the Lee County School Board and has failed to direct our district in a manner conducive with the expectations of our community, then the Lee County School Board will execute the nationwide search with the established timeline, bringing in a new superintendent in April or May of 2017, towards the end of that school year. Dr. Atkins will work with the new superintendent to provide a smooth turnover, working with the superintendent throughout the process, and be ready to open up as a new superintendent for the school year of 2017. This proposal provides a continuity and stability throughout the development process, provides for consistent leadership throughout any potential capital outlay program if we so choose, and through the election cycle. It also eliminates the quandary posed by Dr. Atkins serving as the interim, applying for the permanent position. Since this board all appeared to be in complete support of Dr. Atkins, I would ask, move to amend the following proposal to the following. That we change the contract term to end January 31, 2017. That we provide the compensation of $185,000 for the annual rate, and I'll explain that in a minute. Provide for semi-annual evaluations upon which to grade Dr. Atkins. Provide the transportation allowance of $725 per month. And revise the termination without clause to require a 30-day notice. That's my motion, and we can discuss it once. So moved.
Okay, I'll make a second, and we can discuss.
Second from Ms. LaRiviere for discussion. Can I start with the comments to explain a little more? The reason why I moved it to $185,000 is because even though I think that's woefully underpaid for a superintendent, and I believe that the new search process will vet that this job will warrant a position somewhere around $285,000, but we'll find that out through the market and through a proper analysis. I believe that Dr. Atkins is being very humble, but I think that's being inequitable to keep him at a rate of assistant superintendent. I believe that Dr. Atkins is going to have to do more work than a normal superintendent would be under these circumstances, and he's going to definitely earn that type of compensation. The $725 per month transportation is the transportation allowance also allowed by a superintendent, which is common in the industry because they go a lot of places and travel a lot throughout the district. And it's a lot easier for us to, rather than pay for a mileage allowance, than to give the $725 per month as typically allowed. Other than that, the other issue is for a semi-annual evaluation, is to actually give this board the opportunity to measure the new superintendent so that we can provide the termination that we can actually terminate with cause if we find that he's, within those 13 months, he doesn't have the leadership skills to lead our district as similar as we had with our previous superintendent. Thank you, board, for your consideration in this matter. Comments? Ms. LaRiviere?
A question, and I pulled up, and I'm not able to pull up my documents from this computer to look at Dr. Graham's contract. But I'm assuming that the $2,500 a month for transportation was the same that we had put in Dr. Graham's contract?
The amount is $725.
$725, not $25.
Thank you. I was thinking, what? All right. Yeah, I'm thinking. You go ahead.
Ms. Morgan, or you first? Ms. Dozier?
Well, I have a question for Mr. Martin. Due to the fact that this is a new or an amendment to the current recommendation that you have made, would we need to allow for public comment on this issue alone since we are changing it considerably?
Statute would not require such. There was an opportunity because the item was accepted as good to cause prior to public comment. There was an opportunity to comment on that proposition to adopt an employment contract. A motion to amend at this point to change the terms does not create a requirement in law or policy to provide another opportunity for public comment. The board certainly can do so if it wishes, but that's not required.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Are you seeing me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, you all know that I will not support any motion that is made inaction upon the same day. So I will not be supporting this motion. I will also say that, you know, we have gone through the same love fest that preceded superintendents in short terms. And this is not a statement about Dr. Atkins. It's a statement about how this board gets emotional attachments, rushes to judgment, makes feet-of-the-pants decisions. And I consider this to be yet another example of lack of planning and thought to react on this today. I simply cannot support it. I also would say that I believe that not doing a national search, when we have as a district historically done all of our promotions internally, we have no idea, no idea whatsoever, whether or not the people that we're promoting internally are competitive with their peers nationally in terms of skill, expertise, and leadership ability. So I would not acquiesce to a situation that could lead to no national search at all. I think that's it. Those are my comments.
Ms. LaRiviere?
Okay.
Good night. I deserve the right to come back.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, of course.
Just whistle.
I, while I in some ways agree with proceeding with your amendment to the motion, I would prefer maybe tabling it for more thought. And it has nothing to do with, nothing against you, Dr. Atkins. It has to do with making sure we follow through a thoughtful process and we have time for community members to speak. Now, mind you, I have heard from the majority of the community members that I hear, you know, I've been getting constant emails praising us in the selection of Dr. Atkins. So I don't foresee anyone, any negative. But I also believe that it's prudent on us to be seen as a board that works very thoughtfully and very purposefully. And I'm thankful that we have you right now. I hope we have you for a while. And maybe we could table this for just a little bit of time and then makes, I would prefer making a decision on the motion at a later date.
And board members, I-
I would like to second that motion to table for a time certain of October 6.
Mr. Martin?
Just a bit of advice, if I may. I would suggest-
Just the amendment?
Yes, I understand, ma'am. I understand. Well, the amendment, of course, is attached to the main motion, so if you were to table, if you were able to table the amendment, of course, there's no action on the main motion. I would suggest to you that it would be prudent to have a contract in place today, since you have appointed the superintendent. Certainly, if that is the initial contract that I recommended, if that's what the board comes to agreement on and there's a desire, there certainly could be an action even at the next meeting, as Mrs. Dozier has suggested, to adopt a different contract and to terminate the present one, if that's the desire. I would just suggest to you that that's a cleaner process and enables you to have a contract in place at this time.
I withdraw my second.
So I would, so my first step would be to withdraw my second of Mr. Toyver's motion, or would he just choose to withdraw it?
That's your decision. There is a motion, there is a motion to amend on the floor at this point, and you did second. And if you were to withdraw that second at this point, then there will not be a second. And we would need a second before continuing discussion on that motion to amend.
So I will withdraw my second at this time.
So we're back to the original main motion? Board members, is there any further comment on the original main motion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. We now move to the public hearing. Mr. Martin, or actually, Dr. Atkins?
First item for a public hearing is approval of the revisions for Policy 1.07 Strategic Plan. I recommend board approval of the revisions to Policy 1.0 Strategic Plan to improve clarity aligned with current processes and eliminate duplication. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015.
You want to read them all, so we'll have a look?
Yes.
Please.
The second recommendation, recommendation is approval of the revisions for Policy 1.13 Student Disciplinary Hearing Before the School Board. I recommend board approval of the revisions to Policy 1.13 Student Disciplinary Hearings Before the School Board to place all provisions concerning school board student disciplinary hearings in the policy and delete portions addressing student expulsion, suspension, and alternative assignment procedures to avoid duplication. Effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015. And just bear with me as I go through these. Next recommendation is for the approval of revisions to Policy 1.15 Legal Counsel. I recommend board approval of the revisions to Policy 1.15 Legal Counsel to improve clarity aligned with current processes and eliminate duplication. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015. Next recommendation is approval of the revisions to Policy 4.04 Suspension, Expulsion, and Alternative Assignment. I recommend board approval of the revisions to Policy 4.04 Suspension, Expulsion, and Alternative Assignment to place all provisions concerning student expulsion, suspension, and alternative assignment in this policy and to assign responsibilities for the implementation to appropriate positions. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23- The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to Policy 4.21, Permission to Leave School Campus, to incorporate, excuse me. Permission to leave school campus to incorporate the requirements of the changes to Section 1002.20, Florida statute. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015. Next is approval of the revisions to Policy 9.05, Use of Facilities. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to Policy 9.05, Use of Facilities, provide the superintendent with the option to waive rental fees under certain circumstances. The policy shall then be consistent with the current and proposed revision in our local agreement with the Board of County Commissioners, Parks and Recreation. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015. Next recommendation is approval of the revisions to the 2015 Middle School Program of Studies and the 2015 High School Program of Studies. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to the 2015-2016 Middle School Program of Studies and the 2015-2016 High School Program of Studies, which are reviewed and updated annually if necessary and presented to the board for adoption. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015. Next recommendation is approval of the revisions to the 2015-16 Middle School, oh, sorry. Approval of the revisions to the 2015-2016 Student Progression Plan. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to the 2015-2016 Student Progression Plan, which is reviewed and updated annually if necessary and presented to the board for adoption. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015. Next recommendation is approval of the Facilities Work Program, 2015-2016 through 2034-35. I recommend Board approval of the District Facilities Work Program, 2015-2016 through That brings to conclusion the recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Mr. Martin.
Public hearing?
Okay. I guess he doesn't have to say it at this point. I do. At this, at this point, the public will invite to speak on these nine items. The time allowed for the comments will be three minutes. Is there anybody out on the right side that would like to speak on any of these items? One, two. Anybody on the left side? Okay. I will now close this, this meeting and begin the public hearing. Mr. Valenta.
If please identify the item you wish to speak to before you begin your comments. Thank you.
In reference to 1.07, in item number two, it says, "The district's strategic planning process shall have oversight in the form of a DSP Steering Committee. This committee shall be representative of all stakeholders, including the school board, district personnel, parents, and other community members." And I got to tell you, I've spoken here before with problems that I've had personally with being on some of these committees, in that there's only one person as a parent that's, that's been put on these committees, and 19 other people are like from the district, okay? Which is really just run roughshod right over, okay? So, so it's not, it's not representative of the stakeholders. It's really a slap in the face to the stakeholders. And I've spoken to that before, and many of you have nodded in agreement, yes, that's terrible, we need to do something. Well, here it is, you're voting on it, okay? Tonight, to change that policy, and yet this policy doesn't address those issues. And I, in fact, it, it seems to put in more steering committees, more committees that are going to have more additional problems like that. So, I want to hear from the board members, before you vote on this, or as you're commenting on it, how, how is this going to protect the parental rights and the, and the community's rights to, to make a difference, you know? To have a voice, to be a part of the, of the committee. And then the second one is Policy 9.05. Excuse me. I don't really have an issue with it, per se, other than to ask for clarification. Are we talking about any school, I'm sorry, any school district buildings? In other words, this auditorium? Can this auditorium be rented out? And what would then be the, well, let me just cut to the chase. Y'all know who I am. Dr. Duke Pesta, okay? We'd like to have him here. It's very much education-related. He doesn't charge. Would that not be appropriate? And that's really my only purpose for talking on that one. Thank you.
Ms. Fahy.
Hi, I'm Lori Fahy. I'm speaking on Policy 4.04, under 7C. This policy talks about the expulsion of an exceptional education student. I, I have issues with this because of our inclusion policy and the fact that we do not have enough infield ESE student, or teachers at this point. This is, this is talking about under 7, let's see, D. I can't even tell where it is. That the student would be placed in alternative school for 45 calendar days if the misconduct was a manifestation of his disability. I, I think we, I, I don't like this policy and those wordings for ESE students. I think that it requires you all to look deeper at that, and I do want the issue of inclusion to come up more with this board because it is an ongoing issue in our schools right now. And just for the record, I heard up here several times that progress monitoring was for students who scored 1, 2, or 3. That's not accurate. It's for 1 and 2. 3 is passing. Progress monitoring is not supposed to be for all the students, and especially not for those passing. Thank you.
I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting to September 22. Dr. Atkins, will you please restate your recommendations for this afternoon's public hearing items?
Okay, first is approval of the revisions to Policy 1.07 Strategic Plan.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. LaRiviera, seconded by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? Ms. Dozier.
Dr. Atkins, I would ask you, in this policy, where it says the district's strategic plan process shall have oversight in the form of a DSP Steering Committee, this committee shall be represented, representative of all stakeholders, including school board, district personnel, parents, and other community members. Our SAC committees, there is a definition by statute of how that committee, the makeup of those committees. I would ask that we use that same statute or something similar, because that does guarantee that you have parents, that guarantees that you have community members, and you don't have an overbearing, larger number of just employees on the committee. So, is that something that in the future you will look at as we move forward?
Yes, I certainly would be more than happy to do that. I think, you know, the engagement of our community and our parents is critically important to our success, and the more opportunities we provide, the better.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I trust that you will do that, so I will be supporting this.
Any other comments? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I think we lost Ms. Morgan.
I think we lost Ms. Morgan. No opposed. Motion carries four zero. Mr., Dr. Atkins.
Next recommendation is I recommend Board approval of the revisions to Policy 1.13, Student Disciplinary Hearings Before the School Board, to place all provisions concerning school board, student disciplinary hearings in the policy and delete portions addressing student expulsion, suspension, and alternative assignment procedures to avoid duplication. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, Sep-September 23, 2015.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Fisher.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dozier. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Dr. Atkins.
Scrolling down, that's a long policy. All right, approval of the revisions to Policy 1.15, Legal Counsel. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to Policy 1.15, Legal Counsel, to improve clarity, align with current processes, and eliminate duplication. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. LaRiviera. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Dr. Atkins, number D.
On approval of the revisions to Policy 4.04, Suspension, Expulsion, and Alternative Assignment, I recommend Board approval of the revisions to Policy 4.04, Suspension, Expulsion, and Alternative Assignment, to place all provisions concerning student expulsion, suspension, and alternative assignment in this policy, and to assign responsibilities for the implementation to appropriate positions. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
By Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. Fisher. Discussion, Ms. Dozier.
Dr. Atkins, we have a ESE committee that's made up of parents, and did, did those individuals have any input on this policy? Do you know?
I don't know. I can certainly find out.
Okay. I would ask, if they didn't, that in the future, as we have policies, that any, that committee was formed for the sole purpose of looking at anything that affected exceptional student education. And that would certainly be a good sifter, so to speak, just so that they could look at it, have their eyes on it, and just because we're, we are approving it tonight doesn't mean that we still can't send it back to them if it hasn't been. So, I would ask that we do that, if my fellow board members agree that that's something that we need to do, because we need to have as many sifters on something, or as many eyes, so to speak, on, when we're, when we're doing something so that we can get it right. So, that would be what I would request that we do. Thank you.
And in my reading and looking at it, as I looked at it, the intent was to provide for the allowance of not quick judgment for our students who are in, are in our exceptional student education program, to, because there are other, other complexities that need to be looked at before, as we do, that go forward with the decision-making process. So, but I do have questions regarding ESE. Mr. Martin, are you, can you clarify for me?
Yes, if I may. The, the sections that have been referenced, which are Sections 7, C, and D, the proposed revisions to this policy, first, our language that's already in school board policy, it's being moved into this policy for proper organization. Additionally, that language is required by federal law. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires that students with disabilities receive educational services. You can't expel a student that, with disabilities, but you still have to provide educational services. Additionally, the law requires that before a student with disabilities, before their educational placement is changed, there has to be a manifestation review to determine that, determine whether the, the conduct leading to the disciplinary action is a manifestation is caused by their disability, in which case to change their educational placement based upon that conduct would be discrimination, and for that reason, these provisions are in place in order to comply with that federal law.
See, I thought there was a law that this had been based on in the development of it, so, and as I read it, there's nothing, I don't, I, there's nothing there that I see would do harm to our ESE population.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes, and I know that these policy changes are cumbersome, but as we have been well-briefed ahead of time, and, and I think we had a discussion regarding that, and, and how a lot of these changes and movements are to be more in compliance with the federal law, and definitely are designed to protect-
Exactly.
-the student with special needs who has an IEP or a 504 category, categorization. So, I'm, I'm supporting this this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Dr. Atkins.
And next item is approval of the revisions to Policy 4.21, Permission to Leave School Campus. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to Policy 4.21, Permission to Leave School Campus, to incorporate the requirements of the changes in Section 1002.20. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Dozier. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. F, Dr. Atkins.
And next item is approval of the revisions to Policy 9.05, Use of Facilities. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to Policy 9.05, Use of Facilities, provide the superintendent the option to waive rental fees under certain circumstances. The policy will be then consistent with the current and proposed revised in our local agreement with the Board of County Commissioners, Parks and Recreation. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015.
A motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Dozier. Any discussion? Ms. Dozier.
Well, there was a question that was asked about this auditorium, and this auditorium is included in this agreement, and the superintendent does have the authority to waive if it's in the best interest of people in the community and so forth. So, I would suggest that you get with the superintendent on that.
And there are online forms and applications on to go through that process. Any discussions from the board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Dr. Atkins.
And next item, approval of the revisions to the 2015-2016 Middle School Program of Studies and the 2015-16 High School Program of Studies. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to the 2015-2016 Middle School Program of Studies and the 2015-2016 High School Program of Studies, which are reviewed and updated annually if necessary and presented to the board for adoption. The effective date of these revisions shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by, or most, by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. LaRiviera. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Dr. Atkins.
On is approval of the revisions to the 2015-2016 Student Progression Plan. I recommend Board approval of the revisions to the 2015-2016 Student Progression Plan, which is reviewed and updated annually if necessary and presented to the board for adoption. The effective date of this revision shall be Wednesday, September 23, 2015.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Dozier. Any discussion? All those in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And your last one.
And the last one is approval of the Facilities Work Program, 2015-2016 through 2034-2035.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation of the District Work Facility Program, 2015-16 through 2034-35. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. This concludes our rather lengthy public hearings. We are now moved to other business. We'll start with you, with board comments, with you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber. First of all, I want to send out a thank you to the Cape Coral Breeze for their Friday edition of What's Cool in Schools, which is a very nice illustration of some of the great opportunities that our kids are enjoying in schools and the work that's being done, even in the face of a lot of turmoil in the community. I want to thank Dr. Atkins and the staff for accepting their responsibilities every day for this smooth transition, and in fact, I had a text here from a teacher, and she asked me if I could-
asked me if I could go over there and kiss him on behalf of all the teachers, so. Later, okay. I think it would be better to do it now instead of later.
So it's on record.
And I had an opportunity last evening to attend my first continuous systemic improvement committee meeting of the 15-16 school year. And out of that meeting came a few of the following requests. The committee in, is the committee that reviews our strategic plan. So they request a current report from each one of the seven focus area committees. They want to know when they met, what was the outcome, and what is the plan moving forward. It, it's an amazing group of people who are well-educated, business and community activists, and it was quite an interesting conversation. They also requested an opportunity to meet with a representative from each one of the focus area committees. And what they're going to do is take each one of the seven focus areas and focus on that for one meeting. So we'll start with focus area one, inspiring the students to learn and, and go on, and invite the representatives from each focus area to, to that meeting when it's scheduled on the agenda. They also requested the school board provide a schedule for reviewing advisory committee recommendations, and they request feedback to their quarterly reports and recommendations. They, they elected Chairman Brian Rist and Vice Chair Gary Trichler. They will meet on the second Monday of each month, excluding December, but including May, and I look forward to serving with that committee this year. And I think that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to start my public comments by publicly saying, welcome, Dr. Atkins. I thank you for everything, as I said before, everything that you have done so far, and I look forward to working with you, depending on how long that will be, and it sounds like there was a recommendation tonight that it could be a little longer. Recently, I believe last Friday, I attended the Industry Appreciation Luncheon, and I'm bringing that up because everyone that I spoke to at that luncheon said, said to me, Jeannie, y'all don't need to do another search for an interim for an interim. You've got somebody, and that, you know, they'd say, is he capable? Well, if he's not capable, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have put him there. Yes, he's very capable, he's very competent, then y'all need to reconsider that, because that's not in the best interest of the district, because basically, with all the turmoil and all the controversy that's been around investigations and so forth, y'all need to settle the district down. And so I, I told them that I would certainly be bringing their comments to the table. Dr. Atkins, there was a parent, and she's no longer here, that was concerned the fact that her child's school does not have recess. I can't remember exactly when it was, but I know that this board voted unanimously to put in place recess, and we actually, I, I think, instead of doing a schedule, Dr. Graham asked that would we agree to so many minutes a week of recess? And I, my brain might be a little fuzzy, but I believe it was 45 minutes, and the schools could do it however they wanted to, but it was mandatory. It was not something that you can or you can't do, but it was a directive of the board, and it was up to the superintendent to carry it out. So evidently, we've got some schools out there, it sounds like, that are not implementing what the desire of this board was. So I would certainly ask you to look into that right away. Also, I appreciate the NAACP for coming forth and giving a update on the districts and redrawing lines. However, I'm not sure that the information, I'm not, I'm not sure how that information affects us, therefore, I would ask Mr. Martin, I know that there was the mention of a charter county, and I do realize that we're a charter county, however, because there is a specific statute that governs school boards in the district, in the state of Florida, I think that we are exempted from that. So could you speak to, under your comments, could you speak to the issue of redrawing lines? What is the issue? Do we have to do that? Because I think, I think we pretty much had those conversations when we all agreed and voted for this resolution. This kind of makes us look like we don't know what we're doing, however, I think that we had already looked into that. So if you could address that during your comments, I would appreciate it. Again, thank you for everything you're doing, and I look forward to working with you. And I look forward to the conversation with, at the next meeting, since you brought it up tonight, and it can be brought up at the next meeting, Mr. Toibert. Thank you for bringing it up tonight, and that way, maybe it'll be a unanimous vote instead of a four, four, one. Thank you.
Ms. LaRiviera. Ms. Morgan, are you on, on the phone?
No, she's gone.
No, she's not.
Ms. LaRiviera.
Thank you for the pleasure of stepping in for you at last week's DAC. It was an enjoyable evening. Doctor, I did this last night, short, spoke and shared the rollout of the Chromebooks, and shared some information for people, and then there was opportunity for, for people to share questions. But in general, we've had kudos from other districts in the country for our rollout being as successful as it has been. So we took time, studied what happened in other districts, and did have done, thank you, Mr. Alton's not here, I don't see Twain, but thank you to our technology staff, who has worked together for this, and our trainers at each middle school, who are working with the teachers and working to have upcoming parent workshops, so parents feel more confident and competent in helping their students with it. Yes, there are a few tweaks that are happening along the way, but in general, students can do everything with that Chromebook, and they really don't need access to the internet in order to do any of their assignments. It's all there for them, and so that's a real gift for our students. Let's see, last night, we had our meeting with Curriculum Advisory Council, and it was a very productive meeting. We have, we have some new blood, and that's always exciting, and to hear the input and their vision of what they, what they expected the committee to do, and I think they're happy that we had made two recommendations last June for the Curriculum Advisory Committee to look at two specific areas, and they had to do with AP, American History, and also with Go Math and answering questions and looking at those and get their viewpoints and input. So they are looking forward to that, and they're wanting to provide that feedback. And they also brought up, as did CSI, they said, we make recommendations, but I want to know what happened to those recommendations. So it really does behoove us as Board members to make sure we take note of what those recommendations are, and that we, at a workshop or whatever, have time that we can discuss and, and each of those recommendations, so they know we are, we are listening. And, and, last Tuesday, as we were discussing possible candidates for interim superintendent for the Lee County School District, Dr. Amy Dessen-Moore's name was brought up as a recommendation. Once you know, I highly respect this woman. I was told last week, last year, when I went to a, a training on school finances, they said, every time you see your chief financial officer, give them a hug, because they need it for all that they do. Her name was brought up, and I noted that she would be a very viable option. But then, the mother in me started thinking, and I thought of, and I mentioned her children. I want to clarify that at no time did I ever take the thought of her being a mother or her children into consideration in looking at her qualifications and making the determination of, of who would be taking the, the seat of interim superintendent. I purely considered only the qualifications of all the candidates that were brought forward. My apologies to all working mothers, and I, if anyone misunderstood my heart in that, I apologize. I too was a working mother. I was a working mother where I was the, my husband readily says, Pam, you were the main breadwinner. You were the one who made sure that we had everything that we needed, because his job was, could always be inconsistent. So I know how important all working mothers and fathers are, and I know that they always rise to the occasion, because they usually have that support system and that network to help them excel at whatever task they're given. And so I just, I want to clarify that. And it was really nice yesterday, Dr. Atkins was even sharing the support system that has come along to help him, so that he's able to do this piece. Any task that we are given, any job that we are given, it does require many people to come alongside to help us be the best that we can be.
LaRiviera, I'd like to start by first the speech presentation. I really appreciate the NAACP taking the time and the work that they've done to create that, that presentation, and I asked Dr. Atkins to work with Mr. Martin to, to get the answers back to us. Mr. Martin's going to speak to it, but as far as the applicability and look in the future, one of the questions that I had was, in the presentation, the only ones that seemed affected were Districts 4 and 5, and it's, and so those two, and so, and for, for us to have to scurry now to try to get by the end of 15, so we can vote on 16, where it really doesn't matter, because only District 2 and 3 are coming into play, wouldn't it be more prudent if we took the time, be able to take a look at the, at the demographics, and actually do it in 2017 for the 2018 election, where 4 and 5 actually are coming into play? So I want to throw that out there to give us, rather than put us behind the eight ball and crunch things when we have a lot of stuff on the plate, that if the, if that's something that's doable, I think that would be much better received by the, by the district, and I think that's something, and, and I do support the, the fact that we do need some diversity in our board, and I think that this was a very good presentation, but if we could have actually the more time to do that, if that would work within your window, I would recommend bringing that forward in such a way. Mr. Schaefer brought in testing, and I will take, you know, all the people that talk, spoke about testing, Dr. Atkins, I know the rest of the Board had lots of discussions with Dr. Atkins about that, and I spoke in detail with him, and I, and I believe that's going to be handled really well. Ms. Dozier, when you were talking about the recess, were you talking about the young speaker here? Is that the one, or by somebody else?
Yes, no. I was speaking with the lady here that said that
Yeah, they didn't get the recess.
she asked her child and didn't have recess.
Okay, great. And then Sarah made the comment about why we're having the meeting today at 2:00, and the reason why was under deference of Rosh Hashanah, to respect their
Yom Kippur.
Yom Kippur. I'm sorry, thank you. Yom Kippur, to respect the, the timeframe of that holiday, so that's the reason why we moved it up. My next thing I want to say is, I can actually say it, I think I can say it, well, I don't know if I can do it, yes, I can. I can say it standing. As you can see, I'm standing.
With good posture.
Two, two weeks, two weeks after my surgery, I want to, first off, I want to thank Jesus Christ, my personal Lord and Savior, for the blessings He's bestowed upon me by providing me with, with such a fast recovery and the ability to, to, to recover as fast, and of course, the thank you of, of my surgeon, Dr. Bertram, and then Naples Community Hospital staff, that were so great. But I'd also like to thank all the community for their outpouring of support during these two weeks, my, my, my colleagues for their support as well. I greatly appreciate it. The last thing that I have to say is, we, we currently have, for administrative issues, the last meeting we were together, we appointed, appointed Dr. Atkins only until we appointed an interim superintendent. We now have a, a workshop scheduled for the 16th and 17th to appoint a interim superintendent, and so we need to find out for publication purposes, where is it going to be, how is it going to be held, a little more structure to it, and I'll, I'll defer a little bit more to Mr. Martin, the requirements that we need. I apologize for the letter that I wrote yesterday as far as bringing out this schedule. The problem is, is that, you know, everybody's congratulating Dr. Atkins, he's only going to be with us for three and a half more weeks, because in three and a half more weeks, we're going to have an interim superintendent, because I don't think it's right that if we're not going to let the interim superintendent apply, then Dr. Atkins is going to, you know, may choose to not serve as the interim superintendent, to be our permanent superintendent, and it puts us in a quandary, the fact that we're either get him for nine months or seven months to do this search, and then we don't get him even to apply for the opportunity of, of a, of a respected person that's been in a, in a, in every position in the 10th largest district in the, in the country, to be able to apply, but we don't want to taint the other field. And so, you know, we're putting ourselves into a quandary that I don't think we need to do, and I really want us to consider that, and I'm going to throw out to the Board, rather than make any plans on this 16th and 17th offsite that we were going to do, if maybe we just want to hold off until October 6th to make that decision, we might have to move that, that date because of, you know, publication periods, we might have to move that to November. But for us to actually consider the 17-month plan that I talked about, that would eliminate the problem of having an interim superintendent actually apply for, for a real super, for the superintendent long-term position, because we give him the ample time to either prove what he can do, or he not be considered, and we'll, at that point, we'd have a vetted, vetted nationwide search, search system established, that we could actually go forward with, with particularity and with, with purpose, to be able to follow a timeline to let the new, a new superintendent start the 2018 school year. So at that point, I'm going to leave it up to the Board to have some discussion as far as, do we want this 16th and 17th, and if so, what we need to do. Ms. Dozier.
Thank you. Well, I, I applaud you for your thoughtfulness and for bringing that forward to everyone and giving everyone the opportunity to consider it via email yesterday, I believe we got it, or the day before. And, you know, I scrolled down, because I had, I was kind of behind on my emails, and I scrolled down, and you were answering an email that Mrs. Morgan had sent, and in that email, it was, she had sent it to actually a vendor, and I don't know if you looked, but if you opened that link up, that vendor was proposing a 18-month timeframe of getting a new superintendent in place, and I said, wow, you know? And I didn't know whether you had looked at that, when you came up with that, but, you know, and this, these
I still, when I read my mail, I'm still on Dr.
These are professionals that are telling us that we need to be very, very cautious, that we need to be very, very mindful in what we do, because, you know, as, as FSBA and everybody says, this is the most important decision that, that we will ever make, and that is the, you know, the selection of a superintendent. And I, and I know that there's been some very strong words that have been said as far as not allowing a, a person that is currently the superintendent to, to apply. I don't agree with that, and the reason I don't agree with it, what does that tell all of our, every one of these employees that, that are in this building and out in our schools? It says, you're not worth anything. In other words, you're not worth, and I hope I'm not taking out of context on that, but the message that you're sending is, we don't have anybody in this district that's capable. I would ask you to reflect back on the last two searches that we have had, the national searches and the people that we had. Both of those superintendents were very unsuccessful, and that was what we got from a national search. And I can tell you that I know that we do have some very good quality, some very hardworking, high-performing people in this district, and I certainly, I certainly believe that after being at the Industry Luncheon, being out in the public, reading my email, the public is saying, you know, don't make another bump in the road, don't have another collision, and if you, if you put, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to do an interim for an interim, which I tried to say that the other day, when we were having that conversation, you don't do that. And, you know, I think we need to leave him in there, and if he wants to apply, let him apply.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes, and, and, you know, I've been in this district a long time also, and historically, when we have hired superintendents from outside of the area, their, their tenure has been short-lived and, and also problematic. One of the things that I want to say is that I believe in this community, we have a very deep talent pool, and I'm not saying only in our school district employees, but certainly that. And we talk all the time about succession planning, and, and I don't know how well we're doing that, but I hope that we can make more of an effort to do that. In fact, Dr. Atkins and I had, had that conversation a little bit, a couple days ago. I, I really think that we should not limit ourselves unless there are any legal restrictions, but if you, you know, somebody said something before about common sense. I, I think that we cannot leave that aside. If you have someone who is doing the job adequately, and, and we are hearing from staff and the community that they're comfortable with it, I, I mean, I think we should take a wait-and-see attitude. I, I didn't comment before, because I think October 6th is a little bit soon, and I think we have conversations to have, and I think that maybe we have some research to do, but certainly, we need to keep an open mind, and, and I can't And, and I can't imagine a, a big business like Microsoft or one of those telling someone who's doing the job that they can't apply for the permanent position. I, I just don't, I, I-
Actually, actually, in industry, that is true. And here, here's the difference and the reason why of my plan is, there is, it's, there is proven studies, and I, and I'll, I'll look and I'll try to get those for you, but the, if an interim person is, applies for the job of the permanent position, there is a bias in, across the country that that person has the inside track. And so a lot of people aren't even going to spend the time, you know, because at this level, it's, it's a, it's, it's quite an investment of effort and, and time and money to, to invest into this type of position. So, so it is, it is true that if there is the interim applying, you will get a smaller pool. That is why my plan is, we don't have that problem. If you give, if, if we give Dr. Atkins until February of two thousand seventeen, he'll have had fifteen months in the job. If he, if he can't prove that he's the guy in fifteen months, then we have a plan that we put in a new, ask for a new superintendent. Dr. Atkins, I've already spoken with him. He said, then all I'm asking for, give me the shot, and if not, then, then I'm not. And then I will step down. I will help the transition, hopefully the guy is going to realize Dr. Atkins' worth, put him as the assistant, in, in assistant superintendent role, and then he will help that transition. It will be a smooth transition towards the end of that school year, because we'll have a timeline already in, in process. And if we need longer at that point, Dr. Atkins, we can do a modified contract if it takes us nine more months or ten more months, whatever it may be. But now we've made the decision, he's not the guy, so he's not going to apply, so that the, the whole interim application process becomes moot. Now we have a, a vetted district-wide, you know, county, countrywide search, ready to go. We pulled the trigger with a national firm, and we get the best pool that there is. And it also gives us eighteen months where Dr. Atkins, and my belief in him, our image will be much better, because this group is functioning better. All five of these people support the superintendent, which is something we haven't seen in a while, you know, for the last three years. You know, I believe we could get a better draw of that, of that nationwide search if it becomes a point. But it also gives the opportunity to, to let the person that, that a lot of people in our community feel is right under our nose, the opportunity to serve. And if it doesn't prove out, as far as I'm concerned, I, I don't believe, Dr. Atkins has been twenty-nine years with our district. I believe that when it gets to the point where he realizes he's not making positive progress, we won't have to say, Dr. Atkins, you, you know, we're thinking about you stepping down. He'll come to us. I mean, the, the man is full of integrity. There was an article today in the, in the newspaper, and it was about, they were talking about health, and it was a health and fitness thing, but it really boiled down to character. And the guy said that he hired a lot of people. And when they asked about the application, what type of criteria you need for people, he said, you know, give me brains, aptitude, and, you know, and, I can't remember what his other one was, I think it was drive. And he said, but he really missed the one criteria that really separated the successful CEOs from the non, and that was grit. That was the tenacity and the ability to sustain and not give up. And, and grit is something that, that is a, is a feature that you, a lot of people never get challenged, so you don't build that grit, that resolve. Dr. Atkins has been in our district in almost every capacity and has grit. You know, I've seen him, you know, during the early mornings when he trained for his triathlons and seen his dedication, he has uncanny amount of discipline and uncanny amount of, and, and undisputed integrity. We're not going to go wrong by giving him a shot and giving him the seventeen months. If it doesn't work out, if he doesn't have the leadership, and, and I'm not saying, you know, I think he does, but other people may not, because this, we are the tenth largest district in the country. I get that. And I get that he may not be the, the best guy for the job. But for us to not give him that opportunity, I think would be foolish. And it also, by doing it any other way than giving it in the way that I presented, we present ourselves with a quandary of what do we do now when we need him the most? And do we cheat him out of saying, well, then you can't apply later? And again, and, and I, and I truly believe, Ms. Dozier, no disrespect, but it, it really does, would hurt our national search if we did put the interim in that role. So that's the reason why I put it all out, to say, look, we can have our cake and eat it too. And so I just ask for you respectfully, if maybe if the board has consensus, we'll, we'll postpone the, the dates of the sixteenth and seventeenth and wait, bring it back up for discussion on the sixth, and if we have to, bring it even, I mean, we have a contract now, so it's, there's not a pressing need. Dr. Atkins has, has got his directions, he's doing what he needs to do, and maybe this board can decide when is proper to bring it back and have this discussion. Ms. Fisher.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure that the focus of the sixteenth and seventeenth originally was-
It's not the original plan.
We, we had other work that we were planning to do, was in action planning.
It was, and then Ms. Morgan changed it to be primarily pick the interim and then work on the national search. All the rest of the stuff, of course, if you read her, she sets the agenda, but she actually threw all that out the window, and it was, our, my priority was to sit, pick the interim, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Dozier, but it was to pick the interim superintendent and to start the cri, the process for the nationwide search.
Right, right, and I do understand that. Okay, so I just wanted to bring that up in case there's still a need to take care of that other business.
Personally, I think it would be wonderful to go back with what had originally been planned for the sixteenth and seventeen. And also come up with an agenda as far as planning the beginning parts for the superintendent search. You were right in what you brought out in your letter, in, in your letter and your response, in your response today, there's not a really clear delineated process. And that may be part of the reason why some of those outside national searches did not turn out as successfully as we would have liked. So I know that I had brought forward some items that I wanted to be sure that we had time to discuss, the board's self-evaluation. Dr. McCullers and I are ready to roll, and had, and he has already begun the works that we can do as, with regard to superintendent evaluation and rubric being aligned with a strategic plan. So, which I think would be wonderful, because then we would also have the instrument should Dr. Atkins be in place, we would be able to use that as the tool to help with progress. So I, I believe there are other pieces that we need to have on the table, and we had planned on bringing forward.
So, board, do I hear consensus that, Ms. Fisher, were you going to add, so the self-evaluation, the superintendent evaluation, what else did we plan on those during that time period? And the beginning of the process for the-
Other, other actions based on the accreditation and aligning with the strategic plan.
And I think we were going to come to some consensus with our protocols.
Okay, protocols, so accreditation, protocol.
Right.
So I've got those four. What else did you say, Ms. Fisher?
That's all I said.
So those four. And then, and then maybe as five, you said, start the process for the fleshing out of the nationwide search, to have some type of succession, we'll call it succession plan.
Right, because we need something that we know, because if we go, as we go forward with that, we need community involvement in developing that process.
Correct.
And procedure. And so, and we have several out there who have said they want to be part of helping to develop that.
Ms. Dozier.
Well, I, I will just say that, to give you a historical perspective, we do have a, a plan for a national search that already exists. In fact, we've used it a couple of times, and we have a former employee, I contacted that person to ask about the search, and she said that it's on the P drive. And I had started writing down like an outline of everything that we do, so we already have a complete, we already have a complete, and we could-
Could you, could you make plans to bring that for that fourth part?
We could tweak that, well, we can just pull it off the P drive. It, it's a search that, you know, that tells exactly what you do, you know, and, and how you proceed with a national search.
So that would be great to have us, that, use that as our skeleton to, to tweak and adjust as need be. And secretaries could make sure we have that for that, those days.
So, 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 Mr. Martin, what do you need for the sixteenth and seventeenth?
Well, as I understand from the board's discussion, I'm assuming then that the board is having a workshop on the sixteenth and a workshop on the seventeenth. I, before, there was a discussion about a, a special meeting late in the day on the seventeenth, is that no longer needed?
I believe that's no longer needed, if that's what I'm hearing from the board.
And, and it was also included in Ms. Morgan's notes, that if we wanted to make any decision, we could, the recommendation could go to the twentieth, which is just three days later.
Okay. So just the workshop for the sixteenth and seventeenth?
Two workshops, of course, we need to know the time and the location.
Board.
Locations.
Well, now that we don't, there won't be that special meeting.
Ms., Ms. Dozier.
I know that, I believe Ms. Morgan has been working with Ms. Johnson, and do y'all have any idea, because we, that is something that's going to have to be noticed, when those, you know, where the meeting is going to take place so that the community can participate if they want to. Okay, so I saw something about either here or Construction Services. Okay, thank you.
Any deference, one or the other?
Construction Services.
Because of the seating, I would say down, down below, go ahead.
I was going to say, the, the facility at Construction Services, is that?
Yeah.
And what's nice about that is we can eat there, so if we ever need to, if we need to work through, we can actually have food and, and do our lunch and so on there. And it still can be taped, and there, and, and public can come in.
Canal Street on, on Friday, starting at what time?
I think it was twelve.
Twelve P M? Twelve P M. to five, and then Saturday?
And I don't remember the time.
Was it nine to five on Saturday?
Nine to five.
Yes.
I think nine to five sounds nice.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Martin? Okay. Thank you, board. Have you nothing else, Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. Toyber, board members, a couple of issues that I need to address. First, Ms. Morgan not having the ability to participate by phone in the conversation has sent me an email, and her request is that, since she's not able to participate in the October sixth meeting, that any action discussing concerning Dr. Atkins' employment contract be delayed till, till October twenty-second. I need to share that request. The second issue, with respect to the special presentation presented today by the N double A C P, there are a few different issues that I need to provide you advice on. The first is with respect to a charter county. The fact that Lee County does, Lee County Board of County Commissioners has adopted a charter does not in any way affect this, the election process for school board members. They haven't attempted to provide or establish procedures for election of school board members through their charter. There was mention or suggestion made today in the presentation that the school board is required to do redistricting before the end of this year for the sixteen election. I think you're well aware that the school board did, through the process established by statute, adopt school board member residence areas, districts in two thousand eleven after receipt of the two thousand ten census. Those residence areas are in place until they are changed. There was nothing in the ballot measure in the resolution adopted by the school board that would indicate an intention to adopt, make a revision to the school board member residence areas after the passage of the establishment of the single-member districts. Nor is there anything in the statute that outlines the procedure for establishing single-member district voting that requires that the school board member residence areas be reestablished after passage of such a referendum. So there is no legal requirement for you to take that action before the two thousand sixteen election. Those school board member residence areas are in place, they will be used until and unless the school board makes revision. As, as was discussed in the presentation today, if you do wish to make changes in the school board member residence areas, the district, that does have to be accomplished in an numbered year. If it was going to be accomplished for the sixteen election, it would mean to be done before the end of this calendar year. And as I think you also recall, the school board largely had this discussion, when you made the decision to place the issue on the referendum, you had discussion about whether to redraw the lines by establishing seven school board member residence areas, seven districts. And the decision at that point was to, to not do so, to avoid confusion with respect to the, the districts established by the county commission for election of county commissioners, and also to avoid the expense, because as I discussed with you at that time, in order to make a change in the school board member residence areas, in order to redraw the lines, you would need to employ the expertise of a planning department in order to, with that demographic, demographic expertise, to review the proposed residence areas to determine whether they're appropriate before adoption. I have no doubt about the good faith of the N double A C P in presenting these proposed districts for that purpose, but I would suggest to you that if you had any desire to consider their adoption, that, that the school board independently have an expert review of those proposed lines to determine if, with the application of appropriate test, to determine whether those districts would in fact meet the constitutional test that were referenced in the presentation today before you would consider adoption. So the school board has that authority, there's no requirement to take that action, but if you do choose to consider taking that action, it would have to be done by the end of this school, this calendar year, and which suggests a review by experts for that purpose. And if you may recall that in the past, when you had this discussion, we did consult with the planning department at the county, they were willing to provide that type of service, but at a cost, of course. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Dr. Atkins.
Good evening. I'm sorry for the late hour, just a, a couple of things that I feel I need to say. First of all, you know, this has been a very challenging time for, for all of us. I know myself, it's been, it's been very challenging, very difficult, and so I have to say that during these times, I lean on my faith. Been praying a lot, and I have to thank God for support and guidance during this period of time, and also for the opportunity to really try to bring this district together and move us forward. I, I also, I would be totally remiss if I didn't mention that the responses that, that you all have been provided, you know, our team has been extraordinary during this period of time. They really have been quick to get information to me and, you know, back when we make the request. I have to make mention specifically of Soretta Ralph, who, who really went, came to this assessment schedule, just did a yeoman's job contacting D O E and working with, with her staff to, to make this possible. So I would be remiss if I did not mention, mention her specifically. My family as well, who's been extremely supportive through all of this. It's been really a challenging five years for me personally, and a lot of us, and so they have always been there for me, so I, I have to say, you know, thank you to them. I have been absolutely humbled by the outpouring of support that I've received, both, both, you know, in person or online, you know, via email. I, I really appreciate everybody's support more than you'll ever know, whether this is three weeks or, or longer, it doesn't matter. You know, I, I just, you know, to be, to get that type of support is just really, for me personally, is, is unbelievably gratifying. Ironically, I have to say that, you know, I, I am very comfortable with my, my salary as a, as assistant superintendent. And so that was one reason that, that I spoke with Mr. Martin, left it, I want to leave it the same. But the second ironically is I did not want it to be a, a distraction this evening, but I do appreciate the, the support and, and, and thank you for that, board. We have a lot to do. We have a lot to do. You know, the testing issue is just one of, of many that, that are challenging our district. What I hear overwhelmingly is just restoring public trust and, and bringing this committee, community together, and working with really our, our community members, you know, parents, teachers, support staff, and this board, because we, I truly, truly believe that we are all in this for one reason, and that's for our kids. So everybody who, we, we may disagree, and that's the great thing about this democracy, is that we have an opportunity to come together and disagree and have good civil discourse, discourse, and then reach a decision and move forward. So that's, that's number, really number one on my priority to try to bring us together, because we have, we have issues with capacity concerns, testing, student assignment, transportation, capital, technology, I mean, the list goes on and on, so we can't stop. We have to keep moving forward. So that's, that's going to be my, my mission is, you know, whenever, whatever the day is, again, whether it's three weeks or three years or whatever, when, when we're handing this over to the next leader- this over to the next leader, I want it to be way better than it is right now with a community behind us 150%. So I'm really looking forward to working with parents, community members, our local business, our teachers, administrators, support staff, everyone, to really move our district forward to the next level, because I really believe we can be a world-class system. We owe it to our children, because as you know, they are competing in a, really a global society, and, and it's very difficult to compete unless we give them what they need, which is the best education possible. I want to sincerely appreciate and say thank you to this board for the support that you've provided me, the advice and the counsel, because without that support, I could not do this job, and I'm looking forward to taking us to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Our next scheduled meeting on Tuesday, October 6th, there'll be a school board briefing meeting at 2:00 PM, as well as a school board action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having known where the business has come before this body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Labreviere, seconded by Ms. Fisher, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0, this meeting is adjourned.